Redevelopment Project Open House from 2 to 5 in the community center atrium lobby. So come down to the community center this weekend on April 7. Wednesday, April 11, our next city council meeting at 7:00 PM. We'll have a reception for Montgomery College Scholarship recipients. This is a scholarship fund that we set up two years ago at the urging of our colleague, Councilmember Smith, and we like to recognize the students from Montgomery College who've received those scholarships. For our regular meeting, we'll have a youth council update, a public hearing on the city manager's recommended FY 2019 budget, a voting session, a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a residence survey. Tentatively, we have a resolution providing for appointments to committees. Our two work sessions that evening will be a discussion of exempting 100% of inventory from the business personal property tax and a discussion of the Tacoma Junction site plan regarding building design and placement on the property. Then on Monday, April 16, is the Monday night in April, we will be meeting on Monday evenings at 7:30 here for budget work sessions. The one on April 16 will be on council priorities. The public are, those are open meetings, so the public is welcome to those. On Wednesday, April 18, we will start our meeting at 7:30. We have a public hearing on the traffic calming on Fifth Avenue between Orchard Avenue and Eastern Avenue. This is a public hearing that had to be rescheduled because of the snow cancellation two weeks ago. We have a voting session, the first reading ordinance exempting 100% of inventory from personal, business personal property tax. That's tentatively scheduled depending on what our work session the prior week will turn out to be. Our work sessions on April 18 will be a discussion of the draft Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan recommendations and discussion of Tacoma Junction's site plan regarding public space and sustainability features. Then on Sunday, April 22, we have a Tacoma Junction pop-up from 11 to 2:00 PM in the parking lot in Tacoma Junction where the redevelopment project will take place, so come out to that. On Monday, April 23, we have our budget work session. It'll focus on capital projects. And then on April 25, that Wednesday, our city council meeting will begin at 6:30. So April 25, the city council meeting begins at 6:30. Public hearing will be on the constant yield tax rate and the public hearing on FY 2019 budget. We are holding the meeting at 6:30 and providing childcare that evening so that people who are interested, one, in testifying on our budget or listening to the Tacoma Junction Development Project specifically on traffic and circulation can attend. And so, 6:30, April 25, our meeting starts, not 7:30, 6:30. We'll have the public hearings, discussion of the Tacoma Junction site plan on traffic and circulation, and our voting session that night, tentatively scheduled, is the second reading ordinance exempting 100% of inventory from business personal property tax. And that takes us then to the end of April. All right. So before we begin our business this evening, we would like to recognize the marking of the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. And to do that, we have our city's poet laureate, Merrill Lefler, will recite a poem for us.
You know, first of all, I feel quite privileged to read a poem in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Quite frankly, it's humbling, and I didn't, I thought of writing a poem and I couldn't do it, and I wouldn't. But what I thought I could do, and that I have, is give a place for African-American or black poets to speak in their voices. So the piece that I'm going to be reading to you tonight is called, is a form, it's called "Acento." And in Latin, "Acento" it means "patchwork." And in this case, it's a patchwork of lines and fragments and one whole poem as well. A little thing that I've added to this, and you will recognize some of these, are quotes from Martin Luther King, from some of his speeches, his sermons, and from letters. So with that, I will say that I have not identified the poets whose lines I've used. I have copies if anybody wishes to have one, but through my voice, you'll be able to hear, I think, maybe Martin Luther King's voice. So I've called it "American U.S. Voices: Acento in Memory of Reverend Martin Luther King Jr." And there's an epigraph, we start with an epigraph from Reverend King. "Injustice Anywhere Is a Threat to Justice Everywhere. We must accept future finite disappointment, but never lose infinite hope. They dragged you from homeland; they claimed you, they chained you in coffles. They huddled you, spooned fashion and filthy hatches. They sold you to give a few gentlemen ease. They broke you like oxen; they scourged you; they branded you; they made your women breeders; they swelled your numbers with bastards; they taught you the religion they disgraced. The masses of people are rising up, and wherever they are assembled today, the cry is always the same: 'We want to be free.'" Some view our sable race with scornful eye. I have to say, this is Philip Sweetley from the 18th century. "Some view our sable race with scornful eye," in quotes, "their color is a diabolic dye. Remember, Christians, Negroes, black as cane, may be refined and join the angelic train." I took, I looked to a day when people will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. The struggle staggers us for bread, for pride, for simple dignity, and this is more than fighting to exist, more than revolt and war and human odds. There is a journey from me to you; there is a journey from you to me, a union of two strange worlds. The good man, the great man, has the capacity to project the I into the thou and to be concerned about his brother." And another by Martin Luther King. "Let us all hope that the dark clouds of racial prejudice will soon pass away, and the deep fog of misunderstanding will be lifted from our fear-drenched communities, and in some not-too-distant tomorrow, the radiant stars of love and brotherhood will shine over our great nation with all their scintillating beauty." Some of you may know this poem. It's by Counting Cullen. "Once riding in old Baltimore, heart-filled, head-filled with glee, I saw a Baltimorean staring straight at me. Now I was eight and very small, and he was no whit bigger, and so I smiled, but he poked out his tongue and called me nigger. I saw the whole of Baltimore from May until December, but of all the things that happened there, that's all that I remember. We must learn to live together as brothers or perish together as fools. To be black in America is to be constantly scorned, to be forever mourned. It is a tearful eye; it is a gasping sigh. To be black in America is to be shoved to the side, to be drowned in the tide. Let us be those creative dissenters who will call our beloved nation to a higher destiny, to a new plateau of compassion, to a more noble expression of humanness. Mother dear, may I go downtown instead of out to play and march the streets of Birmingham in a freedom march today? No, baby, no, you may not go, for the dogs are fierce and wild, and clubs and hoses, guns and jails aren't good for a little child. All we say to America: Be true to what you said on paper. We shall match your capacity to inflict suffering by our capacity to endure suffering. We will meet your physical force with soul force. Dear America, my love, if my blackness turns to fruit, do not pull it from the vines; let it grow from earth to sky untouched by hateful hands, so sweet, my juice, my jazz, my blues, so sad but true, dear America, my love." Love is an absolute necessity for the survival of our civilization. To return hate for hate does nothing but intensify the existence of evil in the universe. Someone must have sense enough and morality enough to cut off the chain of hate and even in evil, and this can only be done through love. It is the chord that runs through all of Martin Luther's letters and sermons. "You may shoot me with your words; you may cut me with your eyes; you may kill me with your hatefulness, but still, like air, I'll rise. I'm a black ocean leaping and wide, welling and swelling I bear in the tide; leaving behind nights of terror and fear I rise; into a daybreak that's wondrously clear I rise, bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave. I am the dream and the hope of the slave; I rise, I rise, I rise." This is the last, which you all will know. "I would love to live a long life, but I'm not concerned about that now. I just want to do God's will, and He's allowed me to go up to the mountain, and I've looked over, and I've seen the promised land. I may not be there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we, as a people, will get to the promised land, and so I am happy tonight. I am not worried about anything; I am not fearing any man. Mine eyes have seen the glory of the coming of the Lord." That was Martin Luther King on April 3, 1968.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lefler. All right, moving on now to the rest of our agenda this evening. We also have recognition that Arbor Day, as I mentioned before, is April 7, and we have a proclamation regarding that. And remember that we have the tree giveaway at the library from 10 to 2:00 PM. Now we will take public comments on voting items. Our voting, our first voting item this evening is the second reading ordinance approving an FY 2018 budget amendment number three. Are there any public comments on that? Seeing no public comments, I'll move on to our next voting item. We have a consent agenda that has a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of a leaf vacuum, a resolution providing for appointments to the Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs, and a resolution for providing for appointments to the facade advisory board. Any public comments on the consent agenda? Seeing no public comments on our consent agenda, I will now open it up for public comments on any item. If you'd like to have, say a public comment tonight, please come to the podium and state your name and where you live, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Hardwick. I'm president of the Board of Representatives for the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. As you know, the Co-op lies directly adjacent to the proposed NDC development on the city-owned lot at the junction. The Co-op looks forward to the various opportunities the council has provided to evaluate the draft site plan for development of the city-owned lot that NDC will present tonight. To everyone who shops at the Co-op and enjoys the benefits of the Co-op and to the city council, we ask you to join us in carefully evaluating whether the new plans allow for deliveries, trash and recycling collection, adequate parking, and business continuity during construction. These are the very same things we have been seeking throughout the development process that began several years ago. And as you review these plans, please ask yourselves, will you shop here and keep our treasured store alive during and after construction? Are the conditions for our survival present? In the coming weeks, we will be reviewing NDC's plans, attending council meetings and other relevant meetings, and sharing our views and concerns with the council and the community. We look forward to working with the council and NDC to ensure that any new development at Tacoma Junction is carried out in a way that allows the Co-op to continue to play its vital role in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening, neighbors. I'm Steve Siletta from 13th Avenue in Hillwood Manor. I wanted to speak about the Hillwood Manor Neighborhood Park at 13th Avenue and Elson Street. As the city has been made aware, our park has fallen into a state of disrepair over the last few years. One of the first things that initially attracted me when I moved here to Tacoma Park over 10 years ago was its commitment to recreation and green space. And now, as the parent of young children, it gives me a little bit of heartburn when every weekend they want to go to any other park except for the one down the street from our house. When I looked at the project directory for the city, I see things happening everywhere except for Hillwood Manor. Given the new construction of Sligo Mill Neighborhood Park at Fifth and Orchard, I'm here to ask the city to allocate resources in the next budget to renovate the fund, to renovate our park at Hillwood Manor. Many folks in the neighborhood are interested in this endeavor, and we'd be happy to help lobby the county, work on the same type of grant mechanism that funded the park on Orchard Avenue. Whatever you guys need, we're here to help, but I would appreciate it if you would look into our situation and see if there's any way you can squeeze us in the budget for next year. Thanks.
Good evening. Kathy Breck, Woodland Avenue. And I want to comment on the Junction redevelopment plan. I've recently had opportunity to read thoroughly Michael Schuman's email to you, and he makes and confirms many of the concerns that people have raised over the last several years. But he's doing this from a professional point of view with lots of background information, which I think strengthens some of our feelings of concern. And I would recommend first that if the city, any of the council members have not thoroughly read it and questioned him about anything they are concerned about, they should do that. I would also recommend that the city should have done something like this earlier on, and perhaps it would behoove us to have a second opinion, another independent person who analyzes situations like this for development of small cities, to give confirmation or contradiction to this email. I'm especially concerned about the financial aspects of this. First of all, I want to say I am not against development. The land should be utilized, but it should be utilized properly, and it should be to the advantage of the people who live here, who pay taxes. And financially, he pointed out some very interesting points about the amount of rent the city will get, which seems extremely low, and the way the income was estimated to the city. And the numbers don't look great. So it would, it would make a lot of sense, I think, if you can get another opinion on this and find out how these numbers are developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening. My name is Burn Kelly. I'm from Ward Three. In previous council administrations, I had requested a look at parking for commercial local businesses for longer than 24 hours, people who work and live in the city and have vans and trucks and whatnots, and looking to see if the city could find single-loaded streets housed only on one side, where there might be areas where we could. I know, Terry, in your ward, it's a, it's a big deal, and in Ward Three in Hell's Bottom area, it's a pretty big deal too. But I didn't remember anything coming out of that. And then, secondly, you mentioned another leaf truck, and I think I recently petitioned most of you and commented to the city about that, that the economy of leaf removal is a bad carbon economy and it's a bad biological economy. And I would like to see us reducing the number of vacuum trucks and creating local composting by blocks or by neighborhoods and not using all this energy to basically make a desert out of our, our natural process. Trees, leaves are meant to stay under trees. It fights global warming; it keeps the earth cool; it enhances microbial activity, and it's very beneficial for all things. And we go and spend tons of money stripping it out. That's a bad economy. And what the last speaker just said, something like an Ombudsman, to look at from a, from a neutral point of view, from an analytical point of view, on how you guys make decisions, economic decisions such as the development that's going forward, that by an expert's opinion doesn't look very good for us, it's not a good use of our land, our money, and our taxes. I think we should do a better job, and you guys are the elected people to make it better. So I'm asking you to work harder. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
I didn't intend to, but since there were so few, I can't pass by the opportunity. I really do commend Mike Tabor, so Ward Five. I do, I don't know how many of you read the Schuman piece, but it was really well-written, and I echo the sentiments of trying to follow through in reading. We live sometimes, I feel, in a little bit of a bubble in Tacoma Park. If you venture outside of the bubble, you'll know what I mean, but there is a Seder coming up, the last, actually, the day after Passover, and it's a Seder of plagues that plague Montgomery County. So it's an opportunity to meet people who are running for the Democratic primary this coming June. It's an opportunity to meet people in a speed dating format. So people, the, this is a group of three to five progressive groups who have endorsed these people, understanding that the most plagues we could come up to is 15 plagues. So we had to choose the common denominator of people that, that we chose. So people are welcome to come to it. It's at the County Executive Office Building in Rockville at 12 o'clock, and I have leaflets. It's an opportunity to meet at least 15 people who are running for office in Montgomery County and in the state. So I have these, I'll pass them out before I leave. Thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you.
As long as we're all taking our three minutes. Andrew Strong in Ward Three. I really want to just talk very briefly about process. My understanding, I just learned that Washington Venice Hospital is wanting to now leave lock, stock, and barrel, which is not a surprise to those of us who negotiated with them and found them to be faithless negotiators years ago. So I'm not surprised that they're doing that, but I'm disappointed, and I want to urge the council to learn from that experience as we move forward with many large-scale planned uses in this community, more than I can remember happening all at once since I moved here in 92. The hospital is going to be a problem. I just learned that John Evans Andrews is slated to be redeveloped with maybe 300 kids coming in and out of there every day, twice a day. Now we have the redevelopment plan still going on, and I just hope that everybody in this council will look, not piecemeal, but holistically, at what impact all of those things are going to have, because we know they're all going to be happening. Think about what the impact is going to be on streets that can't be made wider, that won't be made wider. Think about what we're going to do about that. I'm not saying stop the development or halve the development. I'm saying think about it and make sure there is a plan that makes sense, that will maintain the livability of this neighborhood. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? Okay, moving on now to council comments. Does any member of the city council have comments this evening? Councilmember Dibala?
So I hope you take advantage of, of all the opportunities to come and hear about and discuss the budget and, and the junction proposal, but if you haven't got enough and you're in Ward Two, there are two police meet and greets coming up. They've been rescheduled from the winter, from the last snowstorm. One is this coming Tuesday, April 10, at 6:30, 401 Circle. Same time, different, same place, different date. So this coming Tuesday at 6:30, and then on May Day, Tuesday, May 1, at 7 o'clock, 1001 Elm, that's Elm and Larch. The first one is at Circled and Lower Woodland; the second one is at Elm and Larch. So if you're interested in community policing, come on out. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Kostick?
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming. It's always nice to see a lot of people here. Makes it feel a little fuller in the auditorium. I have a couple of comments. The first, I wanted to build on, Mr. Strongen just referenced the John Evans Andrews School, and I wanted to make sure everyone is aware of the meeting a couple of weeks ago, which I attended at the school. Centro Nia, which is a childcare provider and, that has a center in downtown DC and also on University Boulevard in Tacoma Park, is a contract purchaser for the John Evans Andrews property and is looking at opening up a childcare facility there that would have approximately 250 to 300 students. And I felt like the meeting was really productive the other night. They shared a lot of information about their proposed plans. They would be looking at updating the building to ADA accessibility, just sort of some basic updates, no substantial increases in size or anything like that. And the other thing I think is important to note is that they will be going through a process with the county for a conditional use permit, because the property is zoned for residential use. And so part of that will involve a traffic study of the potential impacts of traffic related to the school. So residents, I know there are a lot of residents in Ward Three who are keeping an eye on this. You will, you should, if you live about a half a mile from the site, should receive notification in the mail from them regarding opportunities to comment, and I'll try to keep everyone updated as well in my communications. So I just wanted to give an update on that. I also want to reiterate what Mayor Stewart noted regarding the public hearing on April 18 for the proposed traffic calming on Fifth Avenue, which I know some Ward Three residents may be interested in attending and commenting on. And finally, I wanted to thank our police department for all of their hard work on the Community Police Academy, which Mayor Stewart and I just completed our last class of last night. It was a great 12 weeks, a long program, meeting once, once a week for about two and a half hours, and-
Sometimes three.
Sometimes three, yeah. We went to 10, went until 10 o'clock several times, and it was a really great experience. So I urge everyone, it's open to community members, council members, anyone who's interested. There will likely be another opportunity next winter to, to do it, and just want to give a shout out to Kathy Plevy and Ron Hardy in particular for all of their work on organizing it and helping us learn a lot about the police department. It was a really insightful experience for me, both as a resident and as a council member. So I encourage everyone to take advantage of that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Circe?
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank Steve for coming out and speaking on behalf of Hillwood Manor and the request for the park. It's, I'm extremely excited whenever people come out and really try to push for the things that we need in the community in Ward Six. On Thursday, March 22, we had an opportunity to sit down with Montgomery County Council Member Tom Hucker, the representatives from Hillwood Manor, as well as New Hampshire Gardens. There were also feedback- There were also feedback provided from various representatives from other tenant and neighborhood associations throughout Ward 6, and it was a wonderful opportunity to talk about some of the things that are desperately needed in the ward. We talked about the Recreation Center, we talked about the Purple Line and potential impacts, as well as better coordination with Montgomery County Parks. So there's lots of follow-up from that meeting, and there will be future discussions that will be happening. So we were very fortunate to have the opportunity in an intimate way to sit down with Tom Hucker to talk about some important issues. On April the 10th, at 7:30 PM, we will have a meeting with Hillwood Manor and the Tacoma Park Police to talk about crime, recent break-ins, and things of that nature. So I want to encourage residents in Hillwood Manor to please come out on the 10th. It will be at the Recreation Center at, I believe, 7:30. And also, I have the pleasure of announcing the Love Tacoma event that will be taking place on next Saturday, April the 14th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Tacoma Park Recreation Center. And this is an event that is sponsored by the Tacoma Foundation's Racial Equity Group and is designed to connect residents to services throughout the community. It's a series of events. This event next Saturday will be focused on youth programs and youth activities. So we are asking lots of nonprofits and organizations throughout the community who are providing youth services, tutoring, mentorship, those kinds of things, to let us know. We'll have a table sitting and opportunities for you to actually engage with families that may benefit from those services. We also plan to have lots of child-friendly activities and free books, and it should be a wonderful time to connect families to different groups. But similarly, it's also an opportunity for families to learn about different organizations that they may want to volunteer with or be a part of. So definitely encourage folks to come out next Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Recreation Center. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention some further concerns, and I believe maybe the city manager will touch on this as well during her comments, about the Pepco project that's underway at the moment along Tacoma Avenue, and this is a project that ultimately will cover portions of eastern, portions of Tacoma, portions of Fenton Street, but it does involve digging up the street. And I appreciate that the staff here was able to modify the current detour that's been in use when the work is being done. But it does strike me, and I think maybe if we can look into this a little bit more, I did get some communications from Dal Brith with Public Works earlier today, but I didn't recall from the initial presentation or anything subsequent from Pepco that they were looking at having the area detoured off for a period of multiple weeks, which is now what they're talking about. And I understand sometimes you get out to do the work and the situation on the ground is different and something different arises. At a minimum, they need to tell us, but if there's a major change from what they knew originally, or they knew this and didn't communicate it, I do think it would be helpful for us to meet with them to really talk it through, because I think for the people who are there, smaller cars going through those side streets, I think, is fine, but for larger vehicles, we may want to send them in a different direction as well. So I'd appreciate if we could follow up on that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I have a couple of announcements. One, again, I just want to thank Mr. Luffler for his reading this evening, marking the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. King, and let people know that We Are Tacoma has a number of cultural events in the month of April that are going on to honor Dr. King. So please look on the city website or in the newsletter for those events. There is one tomorrow evening here. Clarence Page will be here tomorrow evening, and so please check out some of those events. I'd like to thank the Recreation Department for a terrific Easter egg hunt on Saturday. There are lots of children about and lots of eggs and candy consumed. In addition, Meghan Murphy and her sister Caitlin held an event at Capital City Confectionery, another neighborhood event to raise awareness for Children's Hospital. It was a nice event. In addition, I want to let people know that this past week, we lost one member of our community, Ellen Marsh, who lived here close to 50 years, passed away. She was instrumental in starting the House and Garden Tour and creating Historic Tacoma, as well as doing many, many other things in our community. We would not really be able to call Tacoma Park home if not for the hard work of women like Ellen Marsh. So there is a memorial service for her on April 7th at 11:00 AM at St. Albans. If people need more information, Historic Tacoma has put out the information, and I'm also happy to share that as well. And I just want to say, I also enjoyed doing the Community Police Academy. It was a great experience, and I highly encourage people to take the time to do that, to get to know our Police Department, our Police Officers, and the staff in more depth and what our Police Department does. So look for the next sign-up time. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. I'll follow up a moment. Tomorrow night, there is a lecture here by Clarence Page called Drum Major for Justice, and it's a lecture on how would Martin Luther King have fared in an age of Twitter, Black Lives Matter, Me Too. It sounds really interesting. I'm planning on attending, and I urge folks to do so. It is free here tomorrow night at 7:30. Tomorrow, a much less pleasant thing is that we will have an alert go off, and probably the entire region sometime between 10:00 and 11:00 tomorrow morning will hear loud buzzing noises from their phones and other electronic devices. It's a test message through the National Wireless Emergency Alert System. This isn't just the things that you sign up for to get your messages that roads are closed. This is a more serious kind of alert system. But it's really never been tested to see how well it goes across the area. So this is a test that's going to be done, that you don't have to do anything other than, you know, don't be too surprised when it happens. Then there will be some opportunities to complete a short survey that indicates where you were when you received it and what kind of equipment you got it on, so that they can see how well dispersed does this message system work. So it's been a fascinating process watching our emergency manager do his part of the coordination of this. And of course, one of the things that they're doing is watching kind of national and regional news very carefully to ensure that if something actually does happen, that this is postponed. So, you know, it is a fairly significant test, and everybody will be aware of it by noon tomorrow. As Councilmember Kovar mentioned, we've been surprised a little bit about the Pepco project and the detours and the amount of time that they are now seeming to plan to have the roads closed. And so I do have some information about it in my manager reports, but we will be having some more follow-up discussions, because we recognize that it isn't what we expected, and we do need to be able to manage it as best we can. Besides some of the activities that people have mentioned, if this Saturday you're bored, the City of Tacoma Park's the place to be. From 9:00 to 2:00 at the REC Center on New Hampshire Avenue, it will be our Fitness Expo 2018, so you can go get a workout and see some nice exercise demonstrations. Come over here then for the Arbor Day Celebration and hang around for the open houses on the Budget and Tacoma Junction. So I'm sure no one has anything else to do. This is the place to be. During the open houses, the REC Department will provide activities for children so that other folks in the families can look at the information and share comments. Quick message, we get participants in the food waste collection program can get up to five buckets of free finished compost from Public Works now through June 22nd. So take advantage of that perk. Just what Councilmember Kovar wants is we have construction notice for the stormwater facility on Holly and Tulip Avenues. The city plans to reconstruct portions of the stormwater system on Tulip Avenue. The project will start in front of 7112 Holly Avenue and extend down Tulip Avenue. The work will include replacement of the inlet on Holly, installation of new storm drain pipe. The work will take place in the street, and we anticipate the work will begin soon, should take about two weeks. And we have some no-posting signs, and we'll try to coordinate with some of that. I think some's started, right?
And I'll just say, since I live at 7112 Holly Avenue, it started this morning at 7:20.
Oh, my. Okay. So I'm glad to be able to monitor the construction activities very closely. Wanted to announce that Montgomery Parks is holding a public meeting on Silver Spring Intermediate Neighborhood Park, which is on Philadelphia at Chicago, on Wednesday, April 18th. And so they're interested in hearing from residents and to share, I guess, issues about or thoughts about the park amenities. The meeting will be at the Park and Planning Office at 8787 Georgia Avenue, and so some information is on the website and in my remarks, but if somebody is interested in that, please I have some base information that tax credit is available for certain low-income renters. This information is on our website, as is other information for homeowners, and we want to encourage people to look to see if you're eligible for any of these kinds of rebates or other income tax, property tax credits. And so we really do want people to pay attention and take advantage of the opportunities open for you, and in a number of cases, we match those savings, those credits from Montgomery County. Want to give kudos to the staff members who've worked on the budget. It's always more work than you think, and at the same time, I'm just so thrilled at the contributions and creativity of the staff. And we've got our various department folks, we've got finance staff, our media specialist, I think, gave a very professional look to this year's budget. I appreciate his work very much, and I appreciate that we always seem to make it in time. And as two of the members here mentioned, kudos to Kathy Plevy and Ron Hardy for the Community Policing Academy. We have hiring update with a number of positions open, but I wanted to note that Jamie Ernst, who was a former planning intern, has now been hired as a planner, and we're really glad she's back. So those are my comments.
Any questions? Great, any questions for the city manager? Nope, okay, seeing none, then we will move to our voting session. The first item we have is a second reading ordinance approving FY 2018 Budget Amendment Number 3. I believe there were some changes that were made from the first reading, so if the city manager wants to review those.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of clarifications, but the, I think the most significant change is that we have added both a revenue and an expense for a community legacy grant. The Old Tacoma Business Association received a $75,000 community legacy grant from the State of Maryland for capital improvements to businesses through a revolving loan fund. The City of Tacoma Park functions as a pass-through agency, so we give the money and we get it back from the state, but we do need to have that shown in our budget amendment. I think that was, there were some minor changes in text that just clarified the issue with the public art projects, that there's, the Conway mural is completed, but that there were some other things that didn't get done with public art funds for FY 18. And then we've, of course, adjusted the impacts of the money related to the revolving loan fund, and that's it.
Great. Anyone have any questions before I ask for it to be moved? Seeing none, would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilmember Siemens, do you have a second? Councilwoman Dubala, any questions or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dubala? Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Would someone like to move the consent agenda this evening? Councilwoman Circe, do you have a second?
Mecha.
Councilmember Siemens? There's a single reading ordinance in this, so does the clerk want to do the roll?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dubala?
Aye.
Councilmember Kostic?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye. All right, that is our voting session. We'll now move to our first work session, which is the presentation of the city manager's recommended FY 2019 budget.
And our staff that will put it up on the screens probably thought this was going to take a little bit longer. Folks will be here in a moment.
Here we go.
It's warming up. Hi, Beanne, thank you. So it's April, and the FY 2019 proposed budget has been posted and is now available for council and public review. The action on the budget is the most important activity that the council takes, and it's my most important responsibility as the manager to prepare a draft budget for your consideration. And I'll go through these items this evening relatively quickly. I'm focusing tonight on some of the background information with the knowledge that we'll be having three budget work sessions on three subsequent Monday work session meetings to talk about special, to go into these matters in more depth. So tonight, we'll be doing a budget overview, and we'll go relatively quickly through those items that will help advance council priorities, that are in the capital budget, in the operating budget, and then a review of the budget schedule. One of the things in thinking about this year is, and it was a little bit interesting, different than in past years, is that we really are at a time of transition, and this budget helps us steer, not just react, to those things that are coming our way. One of which is the Purple Line, got a little Purple Line thing here, too, but it's also how do we protect our community, how do we, both our environment and our small businesses, our homes, and the livability of our community. So we have the numbers. The total revenue of all funds, $32.5 million. Total general fund revenues, about $25.3 million. Total expenditures are $39 million, and total general fund expenditures, $31.9 million. Because there are different kinds of pots of money, that's why often the expenditures are shown as larger than the revenues, but it is a balanced budget. The tax rate I am proposing to raise from 53.48 cents per $100 to 54.50 cents per $100, an increase of 1.02 cents. And the major issues to discuss are my recommendation to phase in five new staff positions, some information on the major capital projects that are underway, and a discussion of our One of the reasons that this was a bit of a struggle this year is that when the numbers kind of get into the system, our unassigned general fund fund balance is $2.6 million. We have, for many years, worked as $3 million as the minimum for this fund to meet the normal fluctuations of revenues and expenditures. We only get tax income during certain months, but we have to pay out payroll every two weeks. So trying to make sure that we have the funds to cover those kinds of expenses is a key part of our budget. Part of the reason that we have a little bit of a lower amount, and I am not completely crazy about it in concern, is that we have a bond reserve that skews a little bit how the numbers work from past years, and so we'll go through that some to explain it. The council has had some discussion of the reserve policy. We presented some information, it's not yet been adopted. GFOA's recommended reserve amount is a minimum of 17%, and that is about $4.3 million. The five new The five new staff that I'm proposing to phase in are a human resources position that would be phased in at the beginning of the year, two police officer positions that would be coming in online after a half of a year, an economic development manager after a half a year, and an economic development specialist in the last part of the fiscal year. That position was listed as a contract position in our current FY 18 budget. We had difficulty filling it as a contract position, and as we looked forward to the coming year and the need for real work on economic development, it made sense for us to pick the manager first and then determine what's the right complement for that person to pick the specialist position. The tax rate, I'm proposing to increase 1.02 cents per $100 valuation. There's a number of different ways to show this information. I'll have a variety of explanations at the budget open house on Saturday, but if you have a $400,000 house, if there were no increase in the value of the home, the tax increase would be $41. The maximum a home, an owner-occupied home can increase is 10%, and that increase then would be 214%, the bulk of which is due to the larger assessed value of the home. Property owners in Tacoma Park are more impacted by the county's tax rate than by the city's. The county executive is proposing to lower their tax, his tax rate by about 2 cents. It's still, because of increased value, shows an increase in taxes. We have some large capital projects. Ethan Allen Construction has started, and so you'll see some changes at New Hampshire Avenue and Ethan Allen Avenue, and some real improvements to that intersection and area. We've received Flower Avenue bids for the Flower Avenue Green Street project. We're evaluating the bids that came in, and we may need some more cash for that project, although it's like a $5.6 million project. It's, most of this is by grant money, so we're pleased with that part, but we do need to look very carefully at the bids for the project. The library project is somewhat moving along, but right now we're doing a floodplain delineation study that will determine if the concept plan that we have will, is workable. We don't want to spend extra time designing until we ensure that that's the case. Wanted to show just a little bit about a diagram that was in the newsletter that people probably got today, which shows the assessment costs, tax assessments for a $400,000 house that perhaps, if it was $400,000 in 2018, and increased by 10% to a $440,000 assessment, it shows how the different cities, county, and state taxes would apply. And again, I'll have more information with different examples of that for individuals. The tax rate has kind of varied between, it's some, years ago it was in the 60 cents range, the last few years it's been 57, 58, 56, and then this year's much lower at 53.48. And again, my proposed rate would be 54.50. Besides kind of the big, big projects, we have a number of really good things just going on year to year in our, in our ongoing operations as a city. We have a wonderful environmental sustainability program. We have an increasing youth outreach program. We provide a lot of housing services, and we've got a real commitment to communications and transparency, and we've been trying to improve that by quite a bit, and we still have more work to do on that. One of the things that I think is really, has been stunning to us in the past number of months, is some of the major community planning challenges that we're facing, and we, very small staff to face them. We had a number of vacancies of our planning staff, and so we're basically using two people to do an enormous amount of work. The kinds of projects that are underway or that we're reacting to are the changes to the Washington and Venice Hospital site with their proposal to move everything off essentially as of next year, the Tacoma Junction project, changes at Montgomery College, trying to determine how we move forward with the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center. Lot of discussion in the community about school facility needs, the need for a new elementary school, continued interest in what happens at the Washington McLachlan site. We have open space plans, transportation plans, bikeway plans, and we have an enormous amount of development applications. Often they're small ones, but it involves trees, it involves somebody needing to get something else with their home or small business, and, and so many of these things are not, we can't figure on our time schedule, it's when these things come to us that we have to work with them. So what are the challenges for the coming year? I think one of the biggest is economic unknowns. We do not completely understand, I don't think anyone does, what the impacts will be of the federal tax law changes, and I know that the state of Maryland has had some legislation trying to, you know, think about what that means for the state of Maryland, and we need to know how that affects us. We'd like to know, and as I think everybody would want to know, what the impacts of the perhaps trade war that seems to be starting might be on our investments and on our construction costs, such as for the library. As I mentioned, we need new staff so that we can help carry out the council's vision. We want to provide leadership in the area of economic development, not a reaction. We want a structure to embed community policing in the police department, and I really need human resource assistance on a day-to-day basis. And I will tell you that it was quite a challenge putting down, putting together this budget when our HR director was sick for over two weeks, right at budget season when the flu hit her family very hard. And I think it just rubs, rubs it in that, you know, when we're so thinly staffed, if somebody is out, it's, it is a real challenge for us. On the other hand, we have deep concern for taxpayers. You know, can, can folks afford this tax amount, especially if there's some changes in if you can deduct or not the property tax on your income tax. And so part of the thing that I really struggled over was not wanting to raise the tax rate. For that reason, I care about the residents and recognize that I don't want to see a burden on them. But on the other hand, my concern for fiscal sustainability, something that is my pledge, is that 54.5 cents is on the low side for the city's needs. I believe it will carry us through for what we need for this year and the coming years, and I do look at the operating costs for the next few years in looking at a proposed tax rate, but it's on the low side, and I think, you know, I really tried to choose the level that I felt was, was balancing the concern for the taxpayers and the need for fiscal sustainability of the city. And I would like to see our reserve level at a higher level. But, on the other hand, what's the excitement? There's some excitement, and, you know, we are finally being seen as a place for economic development. This has not happened in my tenure here with the city, and I think that's likely to increase. We've got the Purple Line coming. Montgomery County finally is paying attention to us by putting in some money and interest in bus rapid transit on New Hampshire Avenue. I, I believe that this is going to continue for years, and we have to be prepared and deal with it in the way that works best for us. And just as young people have taken leadership upon themselves nationwide, they are pushing us here in Tacoma Park. We have some remarkable leaders of young people here, and so what will be there at Tacoma Park? So part of this budgeting is planning for the future, and what, what is it that they want to see and what, what works for them. I want to say that I'm excited about the fact that council-staff collaboration is strongest that it's ever been in the time I've been here. And doesn't mean it's easy, and, or that we all agree, but it really is a very helpful collaboration in trying to set vision and what's, what's doable for the city. And I appreciate that the council's goals and expectations are high. It inspires us to creativity within the staff, and that's an exciting thing. So that, even while I was struggling with the numbers, I felt good that there was, that there was that, that that vision is out there. So I look at the economic context. The assessable base, which is the value of property for purposes of taxation, is increasing in Tacoma Park. It's, it's actually not increasing as fast as some folks think. The net assessable base increased only 6.5%, and it was about 6% last year. I would have, you know, as, as you have heard, an owner-occupied home can increase up to 10% under the structure, and if it's not owner-occupied, if it's a business, it can, it doesn't have that 10% cap. So a 6, 6.5% increase indicates that it is increasing, but it's not increasing remarkably fast, and frankly, I could use some of those funds from some businesses for this, for our tax base, but that's what we have at this time. Similarly, income tax revenue's been increasing, but relatively slowly, and we're going to be watching to see what these federal tax law changes imply. Some of the reports out of the state government indicate that they don't think Maryland will be hit hard on income tax revenue, but I don't, I don't know that, Tacoma Park's not typical in terms of the state overall, I don't know how that affects us. We do have Purple Line construction underway, economic development increasing in our area, and of course, we do have concern about housing prices, especially for people who are trying to purchase homes here or stay in their apartments. And so maintaining housing affordability for residents across the economic spectrum is something that we're hoping to really see applied through the recommendations and your implementation steps from the strategic plan for housing and economic development. And I am watching the tariffs and seeing if we've got some library implications on the construction cost. Every year, have budget principles, paying ongoing costs with ongoing funds. One of the things I'm really proud about in Tacoma Park is that we have maintained our infrastructure even when funds are tight. And some of you know I live right outside the city of Tacoma Park. My roads in my neighborhood are horrible because the county did not put the money in during the recession on its infrastructure, on its roads, and they're trying to catch up, but it's a lot of work. Fortunately Tacoma Park did not do that, even though we were very tight, we did keep those, we did make the changes and to the, to the budget so that we could continue to do road repair all through that time. And of course, we follow our laws and best practices. Go through a few budget trends. We have reserve funds. I wanted to talk just a few minutes about the reserve funds. We have Equipment Replacement Reserve, which saves, it's accumulating fund that saves for expensive equipment with annual contributions, and then it's used to purchase those expensive contributions. You'll see we're doing a trash truck and a recycling truck this year from that. Facility Maintenance Reserve saves for facility component replacement or maintenance. We have a set kind of amount for an emergency reserve. We have our Housing Reserve, which would be for, saved up for housing-related efforts. And the Bond Reserve, which is something a little bit different, it holds the monies that we've borrowed until those projects, until we're spending it on those projects. And then debt is the amount that we pay out for these things. On Real Property Tax, for FY 18, the rate was reduced below the constant yield level, so we are on a lower level of tax rate than we've been for quite some time, and the resulting income. We have income tax. The city, all the municipalities get 17% of the amount the residents would pay to the county. That amount has risen slowly. For intergovernmental revenue, we've remained fairly flat. It includes tax duplication, highway user revenue, state police aid, cable operating revenue. Tax duplication continues to be frozen at low levels since 2012. Highway user revenue is supposed to increase in 2020. It's not for 19, but at least for 2020, and that is a remarkable achievement of the Maryland Municipal League and the work by these council members. Cable revenue is beginning to decline. We've received that for many years, but as people go kind of cut the cord from, from cable, we're anticipating a 5% to 7% decrease and not probably ever increasing. Nevertheless, Real Property Tax, Income Tax, and Intergovernmental Revenue comprise about 93% of our general fund revenues. For Personal Property Tax, the expected FY 19 revenue that I have in my proposed budget is $420,000. This continues to have the amount for equipment and furnishings, which is in the $100,000 range, and for inventory, about $320,000. The council has indicated support for eliminating the inventory portion of the personal property tax, with the reduction in revenue to be offset by an increase in real property tax rate for commercial properties. However, the county's not able to do what it takes to get that category running for the FY 19 year. Since we're not able to do that, I'm asking that we keep that inventory tax money for FY 19, have the change be effective for FY 20. Nevertheless, this discussion will come before you even next week on April 11th. One of the things to consider is that the commercial real property tax rate category requires some definition, and that will be a discussion that we won't need to do this in this coming months, but we will need to do relatively, certainly for FY 20. Got some graphs. Property tax revenue, kind of somewhere between 10 and 13 million. The net assessable base has been, in the last few years, somewhat increasing. For one of the budget trends, I wanted to talk just a moment about tax duplication. I find it increasingly out of kilter with the costs the county would have incurred if they were responsible for the services in Tacoma Park. And I, I got really annoyed at a budget, at a quote out of the budget transmittal from County Executive Legate. He said, "Since 2007, I have added 132 police officers to the Montgomery County Police Department. While county tax-supported spending went up 24% over the past 11 years, I made sure our police budget rose by nearly 33%. In that time period, since 2007, the amount that they would have spent in Tacoma Park, according to the way that these tax duplication payments are made, only increased to us 7.5%." So this is what, this is when people are talking about why are we faced with some of the tax, some of the revenue issues that we have, part of it is this. And so it's really very frustrating to see continued resistance by the county council and by the county executive in not fairly compensating us on tax duplication. Point out just a moment, the two charts, a chart that we put in, the fund balance projections for the general fund, this goes to the issue of the total unassigned fund balance, which is near the bottom right of this slide, 2.6 million. The computations that go into this, you kind of need to sit down and be talked through, and I'm happy to do that with you, but one of the major reasons for this number not to be higher is the bond reserve, the restricted bond reserve, which as of, in the second column, as of June 30, 2017 additions, has $9 million. This was the $9 million that we budgeted, $7 million for the library, $2 million for the road projects. Wasn't spent right away. The road projects took a little bit longer getting started than we had anticipated. The library's taking even longer. And so what that means is that there's still 5.6 million as of the end of this fiscal year, the end of FY 19 fiscal year, that won't have been spent on these projects, and so it affects these calculations. Last year, we had thought that things would be moving on a lot quicker, and you'll see here that the bond reserve there only showed 3.5 million, and we were over the $3 million unassigned fund balance that we feel is more comfortable. I did look at what all of these things mean to us on a day-to-day basis with income, inflow and outflow of funds. and outflow of funds. I am comfortable that the 2.6 is sufficient, but we're watching it very closely. Have a beautiful picture of debt. This is just something that shows the different things that we have borrowed money for and the amount total that we must pay in the upcoming years. For 2019, for FY '19, it's $916,000. That's about the highest that it is for the upcoming years. But it really doesn't, it's going to take a few years before it starts to drop down a little bit. This is still well within best practices in terms of the proportion. Nevertheless, it's a big piece of money for us. So a couple other things to cover. Personnel costs, wages have increased between 2.1 to 3.35 percent in FY '18, and it's also what we are projecting for FY '19. And the 2.1 is for folks that get satisfactory, 3.35 is if there's also a distinguished level. And so we look through that, is what that means citywide. Right now, we're undertaking a compensation survey so that we can check to make sure that what we pay for the positions are fair, given the competition that we have. As I said, I'm proposing to phase in five positions, and very pleased that. We're only having to increase our health insurance costs by 2 percent. So we're very pleased with that when we got our budget numbers in for that. The costs of supplies and services have decreased by like 7 percent. We really do keep tabs on not just spending money. We watch what we do very carefully. And we have some capital costs in the general fund expenditures. We certainly pay for road work, sidewalk work, facilities and equipment, a portion of some funds that go along with grants. And we will need to see what the library cost estimates are versus the $7 million we've set aside. And as I said, our departmental supply services and miscellaneous costs declined 7.6 percent. One of the things I want to mention, it was a little bit confusing to me in the budget book, and I know a couple of people have asked questions about it. Why does, if you look in the non-departmental miscellaneous number, which I did not include in the other line, this bounces all around because of some of the different things that we have in it. It included housing fund expenditures, however, we've not had any yet other than $10,000. And it includes a general contingency, which we're required by the charter to have. And so sometimes those numbers are there at different levels, and it can make it confusing to look at those lines. For our capital costs in FY '19, I tend to try to budget a half million dollars each for street repaving, for new sidewalks, and for ADA sidewalk improvements. This year, only budgeting $300,000 for street repaving, but we're very fortunate in that, fortunate in some ways, in that we have utility work that goes on. We're able to put in money for the curb and gutters and the base, and the utility companies pay for the street actual paving. And so we're actually getting a bigger bang for our buck with the $300,000 than if we did all the work for $500,000. I'm continuing an amount in the budget at $500,000 for new sidewalks because there's a lot of demand for new sidewalks. Nevertheless, if this is a place, this is a place you can cut because this is, it's not a requirement, and it's capital money out of our general fund. I left it at $500,000 because of the demand. For the ADA sidewalk work, still keeping $500,000 for city sidewalks and $200,000 for state highway sidewalks. The city sidewalks, we're almost done with ADA improvements on city sidewalks, and I know that we have an effort to try to get that knocked out. Again, that's a place, something that we could delay some of that improvement. A lot of sidewalk work is also being done through the Flower Avenue project and the Ethan Allen project, so we are making advances from other accounts on that. For our equipment replacement reserve, I'm contributing $700,000. That's about the amount that's required over the next five years. The amount that would be spent out is like $695,000. And so I'm comfortable with that amount to keep the equipment replacement reserve healthy. That would pay for FY '19 for our recycling truck, trash truck, five police vehicles, a rear elevator upgrade in this building, leaf box, HVAC and chiller pump also in this building. This adds up to, I think it's over a million dollars for this year. So this is kind of the big hump of the next five years of equipment replacement reserve spending. The reason that we have this reserve is because these numbers can bounce all over the place, and we need to be able to replace these things when they are due for replacement, which may not be when we necessarily have that much extra money. For the facilities maintenance reserve, I'm proposing to contribute $200,000 to it, but use more than that to replace the work on the atrium floor that Councilmember Siemens has been working towards for a very long time, with some police-based construction right underneath it for a cost of $325,000 in addition to the funds that are in for design in this year's budget. And then other miscellaneous improvements in facilities totaling $101,000. When you look in the CIP pages of the budget, there's a lot more detail about the different items. For the stormwater fund, we raised the fee last year. We're intending on keeping it at $92 this year. Projects include work on Flower Avenue, Devonshire Glazewood, Grant Holly, Glen Side Anne, Glen Side Jackson, and the design of the Tacoma Branch Stream Restoration Project. These are our wonderful projects, and they help advance our requirements for compliance with state law. Also, wanted to mention that the $92 for FY '19 will not be billed separately, but will be part of the property tax bill for most people that receive property tax bills. So you're not going to have to write that extra check that way. And of course, we have, capital costs can vary a lot when there's large projects, and we have three large projects this year. Special revenue funds account for our grants, and I think we have about $5 million worth of special revenue funds this year. 3.7 are to be spent on the Flower Avenue-Green Street, $690,000 for Ethan Allen Gateway for FY '19. And then we have a variety of smaller projects that get some grant funding. The capital cable grant funds, we have about $3 million, a little over $3 million in the bank of this fund. It can only be used on capital projects that somehow have a cable tie to it. I'm intending on trying to use quite a good amount for the AV-related portions of the library project. Speed camera funds are about stable. They pay for two police officers and a photo enforcement analyst and some smaller equipment. I did look, we do look to see, you know, are the numbers dropping up, but they do seem about stable for the last couple of years. Council priorities. This budget is structured to advance your priorities. As you know, you had your retreats. We had this year a roundtable with the senior leadership team, which I found very valuable. And we have the items that were adopted by resolution in March. So we've got things to address these council priorities. We'll go over them in more detail at the first budget work session. But community policing, library, housing elements, what to do with the Washington Venice Hospital site, a variety of neighborhood-type improvements, as well as community events and art programming for a livable community for all. For fiscally sustainable government, again, we are contributing an additional $100,000 to the police employee's retirement plan in addition to the actuarially recommended We have wonderful environmental programs with a focus on assisting lower-income residents in multifamily buildings and some wonderful stormwater management projects. For engaged, responsive, service-oriented government, we're looking forward to the results of the resident survey, which will be going out, actually, when does it go out? Another, it's probably like two months from now or so? Just wake up.
Council will be considering a contract on April 11th, and I hope we can hit the ground running pretty shortly after that.
Right. So we wanted to build on the results of that in terms of what improvements we can have for our service delivery, as well as assisting in gathering data for the city's racial equity focus, and hoping to add some assistance in the human resources division. In order to do the community development for an improved and equitable quality of life, this is kind of the, I think, more specific way that we look at economic development, is how do we improve our community equitably? To implement the economic development elements of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, I believe we need two new positions, an economic development manager and a specialist. We'll capitalize on the Purple Line's positive opportunities and also protect our businesses and residents from potential negative impacts. We've got New Hampshire Avenue redevelopment, business assistance throughout the city that's needed, the Tacoma Junction Development Project, and mixed-use development that helps expand housing opportunities. And so my major point for this budget is that we cannot rely on the private sector to craft and maintain the special character and diversity of Tacoma Park. It will take work on our part to make it happen. Capital budget, I've gone through before, and there's codes that indicate in the budget what funds they come from and what the different funding sources are. For the operating budget, the full-time equivalents of personnel increased from 165 to 171.86, represents five new full-time positions, and adjustments in hours for part-time, mostly recreation staff. The recreation department, their programs are so popular that they need more staff. They mostly make a little money net, but they do need the part-time staff to help run them. So we have the proposed creation of a new economic development division in Housing and Community Development Department. Also proposing to merge the Gardens Division and the Urban Forest Division in the Public Works Department under a vegetation management supervisor. I think this will help both the Gardens and the Urban Forest Manager in running their units, gives a little bit more flexibility for them. As I've mentioned, moving towards organizational change in the police department to better advance community policing goals and for better management by two new positions, and a move to use racial equity lens in both our internal and external operations in the Wanted to mention, as I mentioned, we had a little bit of a struggle as we're putting the budget together, particularly with the staffing vacancy absence in human resources. And so there's a little bit of an error in the budget book, and I just want to raise your attention to it in HCD staffing. We went through several different efforts trying to figure out how we best should staff HCD, and they were hiring for a planner at the time, and we were trying to figure out how this all works. So our current staff consists of, for the planning and community development functions, not housing, consists of a community development manager, a planner who we hired, who's reported today, so it's been vacant, we have one today, and a vacant economic development specialist position that had been a contract position. If you look in the budget book, though, under Planning and Development Services, which would be this kind of new unit for planning, it has a community development manager, a senior planner, and a planner. Also has a part-time senior special projects coordinator, who is our safe routes to schools person. The proposed budget for staffing for Economic Development Division has an economic development manager and an economic development specialist. In the past, our planning staff was supplemented by interns. I wanted to note, there's been no approval by you, and there's been no hiring or advertising for a senior planner position, but it's listed as being there as proposed. There are funds in the FY '18 budget, our current budget, for that economic development specialist position and for a planning intern. For FY '19, given the amount of work, we do need either a planner or intern positions in the HCD. So as we get into the operating budget, I just wanted to highlight that there'll be some discussions about what that means. I don't think it makes a major difference in funds, but I want to talk it out with you, and we all kind of got surprised by just the nature of last-minute work on the Some of the things that we do that are well-received are that we do provide community grants, we have community partnerships, and we provide assistance to others. We have $100,000 for our community grant program plus the $30,000 for emergency assistance services. We have funds for the Independence Day Committee, the Folk Festival, the Arts and Humanities Commission. We have $110,000 for the community partnership program, which advances council priorities. This year, we're adding in some of the kind of playday activities as part of that budget that would have to go out for our request for proposals and go for a contract. The advantage of the community partnership program is that it allows others to help us provide the services that implement council priorities on more than just a one-year-at-a-time basis. We also continue to have $150,000 for the city supplement to the state homeowner property tax credit program. That's not a hard cap. If we need a little bit more money, we spend it. So at some point, this gets turned over to you for budget reconciliation. You can do reductions or additions to this proposed budget, and you can raise or decrease the tax rate. And each cent on the tax rate equals about $239,000. Got the budget schedule that we've been trying to promote in many different ways. Looking forward to the budget open house and the work sessions. I will urge residents, if you have things you want to say positively or negatively about the budget, that you do it sooner as opposed to later, don't wait to the time when it's the first reading of the budget ordinances. It's very useful to have that input early so that it can be part of the council's consideration for reconciliation. And questions, one of the things I did hear was put the young people looking at us to make sure that we're looking towards the future.
Great.
And the chief, that's right. There's other people there. I don't anticipate a lot of questions tonight. I did receive some of your questions, and we'll continue to keep a log of kind of technical questions, but the real detailed discussions will happen at the work sessions. But I'm happy to answer anything right now if you'd like.
Terrific. And I'll just note for our new colleagues, the way that we've done budget reconciliation in the past is when we have items that we're thinking we may either want to add or subtract from the budget, we just keep a list as we go through our budget work sessions. And then there's a time in late April where we review that list, and people can either decide to take things off or add things. But it's helpful that we keep a running list of potential things that you may want to either take out of the budget or add to the budget, so that we're also not waiting until the last minute, because sometimes staff needs to answer questions, recalculate some numbers, and do other things. So, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And first, I just would like to thank the city manager and her staff for finding a way to keep me out of trouble for the rest of the spring.
Oh, yeah. Don't have anything else to do, right?
That's right. It's like there's going to be quite a bit of work between now and the time we're able to approve this. But no, it's obviously, you've put in a lot of work in this and appreciate it, and very good presentation. Just for tonight, I have just one request, and that is on the equipment replacement reserve. If you could send me the spreadsheet that shows how that's calculated, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions for this evening? Councilwoman Circe?
I just want to echo the appreciation that I have for the team. I know that this is... I know that this is often a very arduous and thankless process, so I want to say thank you, because I know putting together something that is 100 and, what is this, 192 pages, is not something that takes 15 minutes to do. But I do want to ask about, that when we start discussions about FTE requests, that we think about it from the perspective of organizational charts and potential roles. I'm having a really hard time visualizing the Housing and Community Development org structure within the team and what the various roles and responsibilities would be, and that would help with making decisions around FTE requests. Thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Yeah, as you already know, I have a long list of questions, but for tonight, could you just go back to the place where you said that there were several different sources of revenue for the city, and just tag percentages to them? Because what I want, while we have a full house here, I want people to hear where the different sources of revenue are coming from.
Okay. The property tax is about 54, 55% of the budget. 25% or so is intergovernmental, and about 15%, it's actually down a little bit less, 13% this year for income tax. Those are our major, those are our major.
So 13, 15% for income tax, and we don't know what's gonna happen to that, for example.
That's right.
So there are these other pieces besides the property tax-
That's right, that's right.
-that are in play, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Kovar?
Just a couple of things, too. This follows along with what Councilmember DiBala, I'm sorry, Councilmember Circe mentioned. With the proposed new positions, since some of them are only for part of the year-
Right.
Not now, but when we get into that, what is the longer-term impact on budget?
That's right.
Because I don't want us to be in a position where it's, oh, it's just for a quarter of the year, we'll take it, but then, obviously, in the future, it'll be a full-year position, so.
No, I particularly was concerned about that, and so for that reason, went through a number of projections for the next several years out with the full, you know, with that full year of those various positions included, and that's information we'll share with you.
Two other things, you mentioned, and this wasn't a guarantee, obviously, but tariffs could increase, the tariff wars or whatever, could increase the cost of the library. I assume that's that construction costs could get more expensive?
Yeah.
Okay, because we're not importing bond money or anything, right?
No, I look for anything. No, one of the things, and actually, when we were doing this original community center, there was a point where all of a sudden steel prices were very high, and so I don't know that that's gonna happen, it's just something to watch.
And the only other question was, you've given the proposed tax increase, and I think I saw it in the budget document when I was looking at that last night, but what, how much does that represent in dollar amount? So in other words, that's a 1.02 cent increase, I think, right? What's that worth?
You know, it was, I think it was about $244,000, go back and look at exactly the amount, and then you add it on to what the assessable base increase would be. So depending, and this is a question that was raised offline, you know, what do you compare it to? The State Department of Assessment and Taxation sends out its constant yield numbers that include assessable base. I anticipated that the total amount, and the information I had shared before, is a little over $800,000, about $850,000.
Between constant yield and the proposed increase?
That's right.
Okay.
But if you look at what we projected for FY '18 in tax revenue, it brings it up to about a million, because they keep adjusting the number, and so what's we've got in the books is one thing, and then just the time that changes by the time it gets to now, there's a little bit more of a change, so.
But so to the extent one wanted to, say, for example, not have the increase be as high as was proposed in this-
Right.
One would have to chip away in some way at a chunk of money in the roughly $800,000 to $1 million range to begin bringing it lower.
I would prefer that you, I would prefer that you think of it more just on the tax rate, the $239,000 up or down. You know, we certainly will look and see what that means for, you know, for an average taxpayer.
Right.
But I think, you know, there's, you know, if you, if you went to the constant yield, which is just over 50 cents, from where, you know, we're talking almost a million dollars right there.
Right.
And so that's just very difficult, I think, for this budget to be able to handle that.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. I just want to echo the thanks that my colleagues expressed for all of your work and the staff's work on the budget. I had a couple of questions my colleagues already raised, but one thing I want to just kind of point out in terms of a paradigm shift, I think, is the only thing I heard you mention as we were going through here, as something that could potentially be cut or reduced, was related to sidewalks. And sidewalks are really important, so I know that's, I know that's not the only thing we could cut-
Right.
But I think sometimes it's easy to look at it that way, and so I just want to encourage us to think beyond that a little bit.
Right, no, I appreciate that very much, and I don't mean to say that. I have learned that if you're looking at big amounts, you have to look at capital money, or you look at positions, and that's really, those are really about the only places that you get big enough amounts to make a significant difference. It's pretty easy to find $20,000 here and there and that kind of thing, but if you're really trying to make some kind of difference, you do have to look really carefully at the capital numbers.
Sure, absolutely, and I understand that.
I'm not throwing sidewalks under the bus.
Good, they're very important. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, all right. Well, I think that's a good introduction to our budget. I want to just say that there's also information in the newsletter, and to also encourage people to come to the open house this Saturday. When we did it last year, not too many people were able to attend, but we hope more people can attend this time. There will be city staff there, so we'll be able to really dig into the different department budgets. And again, there will be activities for children on Saturday if you come for that. So now we're going to start setting up for the Tacoma Junction draft site plan presentation, and before we do that, I just want to say a few words. We're going to welcome Neighborhood Development Company and Street Sense tonight, and before they do that, I just want to, I know most of you are here for that, you weren't here for the budget, but we decided, since you were here, we would do the budget and let you listen to that. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who has stayed engaged in this process and provided feedback over the last few years, and I think as we've gone through this, we've really made this, at each turn, a better project, and I'm very excited as we enter into this next phase. As we've talked about before, our vision for Tacoma Junction has been and continues to be a well-functioning area overall, and not just looking at this as the redevelopment of a parking lot. To this end, in October, when the council passed a resolution to Direct NDC on the elements we need to see in the draft site plan, we were really thinking about that as how we can have a well-functioning Tacoma Junction overall. In addition, just as a reminder, the city undertook its own independent traffic study in addition to the one that Neighborhood Development Company undertook over these last few months. We are, don't have all the results back from the traffic studies, we had been hoping to, but we will be looking at those over the month of April, and so stay tuned for more information on that. I think we'll hear a little bit tonight from NDC on their traffic study, but there will be more information throughout the month of April. There's a blog up on the city website, and the agenda cover for our work session tonight goes over a number of items, but I just want to emphasize two things. One, talk about the process over the next six weeks, and talk about decision points, okay? So what is going to be our process? Well, we start our process this evening with the presentation of the draft site plan. And then, as I noted at the beginning of our meeting tonight, we have a number of work sessions throughout the month of April in order so that we can really dig in deep on different areas of the project. In addition to that, we have the open house this Saturday and a pop-up on April 22nd, because we wanted to make sure that we also had opportunities for people to engage, to have back-and-forth conversations with the team at NDC and Street Sense with, as well as with our staff and with all of us. One of the things that I think a number of us heard very clearly in the fall was to be able to have things at different times and a request to provide childcare. So at the open house on this Saturday, there will be activities for children. Then on April 11th, we will have a work session here. It will focus on building, design, and placement on the property. April 18th, our work session will be on public space and sustainability features. April 22nd will be the pop-up at Tacoma Junction, and this is a chance to visit the site, see where the markings will be, designating public space, the placement of the buildings, and all of that. Our work session on April 25th will be on traffic and circulation, and again, our city council meeting that night will start at 6:30, not the regular 7:30, and childcare will be provided. On May 2nd, we are tentatively scheduled to discuss a draft resolution regarding the site plan, and then tentatively vote on it on May 9th on the resolution on the draft site plan. In addition to this schedule, I know all of us up here are available to meet with smaller groups of residents, one-on-one. I know also city staff is also available. In addition, I wanted to let people know that also in the fall, a number of residents, and even some folks tonight, suggested that the city council have an advisor, someone to help us think through this project. And I was introduced by one of our neighbors on Sycamore to Professor Cron Roth at the University of Maryland, University of Maryland, and he has offered to be a resource for us on the city council and the staff as we consider the design for the Tacoma Junction project. He's already met with some of us, and he will be at meetings in the future as his schedule allows. Just to let you know, he has been a practicing architect and educator for over 30 years. He's the Associate Provost for Planning and Special Projects at the University of Maryland. Prior to joining the University of Maryland, he was Dean of the College of Art and Design at Louisiana State University. His leadership has focused on expanding design thinking into the broader context from the creation of problems to the caring of our environment and the advancement of the role of the designer in the broader community. And he is currently the campus liaison with the Phillips Gallery. He is also the founding board member of the Center for Planning Excellence, a nonprofit organization that coordinates urban, rural, and regional planning efforts in Louisiana. And he has a lot of other things he's done, because he's been an architect for 30 years, so he's done a lot. You can find his bio on the University of Maryland website, and as I said, he will be, as his schedule allows, at our different public meetings, so you'll, people have a chance to interact and meet with him. And so I just want to thank residents who, I encourage us to do this, and in particular, thank the resident who put us in connection with David, and I'm looking forward for him being an advisor to us on this project. So that's the process. What are the decision points we have as we move forward over the next few weeks? Well, when we look at the site plan, we've talked about that we want this project to be one that's lasting, memorable, and reflective of the community and character of Tacoma Park. Our goal is for this redevelopment to create a more flourishing Tacoma Junction with improved opportunities for residents and businesses. In addition, the council has repeatedly stated that we want the co-op to thrive and continue to be an integral part of our community and a part of Tacoma Junction, and we believe we can have both the redevelopment of this parking lot and to continue to have a vibrant and successful co-op. So as stated in our cover sheet for our work session tonight, as we review this draft site plan, what the council will be relying on is what we outlined in our development agreement, the agreement we have with NDC on the specifications we had for this project. In addition, we will be looking at the resolutions that we have passed over the last few years, including the most recent one in October. All of that information is on the city website on the project page, which, again, people asked us to revisit and make user-friendly, and so I'd like to say thank you very much to the city staff and Councilwoman Kostick for spending time thinking about how we can make that project page more user-friendly. And so if there still are things that are hard to find or you think could also be improved, please let us know, because we want to continue to do that. So those are the, what we will use as our guidance as we go through this process and evaluate the site plan. Again, we are tentatively scheduled to vote on whether to approve the site plan on May 9th. If not approved, there will be further discussions with NDC about next steps, and that is all laid out in the development agreement that people can look at. If we do approve the site plan, that would signal to NDC that they can proceed with finalizing and submitting the plan to the county. And we had on February 14th, on Valentine's Day, we had members of the county planning department come and walk us through what that process then looks like, and that is on their presentation, and that recording of that work session is also on the city website, if you're curious to see what happens once the site plan is approved by the city council and then goes through the county process. So those are the decision points we have coming up over the next six weeks, what this council will be using as sort of our guidance as we think about and discuss the site plan. I just want to thank everyone for staying engaged in this process, and I am really confident that by continuing to have productive, respectful dialogue with each other, that we can have a thriving, beautiful, funky, and functional Tacoma Junction. So with that, I'm gonna now turn it over, I think, to Colin.
I was on, sorry, I should talk first. Good evening, I'm Colin Green from Street Sense. I'm the senior director of planning there, and it's good to be back to talk more about what we have been up to since the last time we were together in the fall of last year, and I'm here as a representative of the team, Neighborhood Development Company, of course, and I'm pleased to report that between the last time we met in this venue and today, we have expanded our team. So we've included folks from different disciplines that are helping us understand the holistic nature of a project of this type, including a landscape architect, including civil engineers, and continuing to work with our team of specialists in traffic, transportation, building science, et cetera. I wanted to take just a moment to kind of talk about how, when we were here the last time, we really have taken to heart the comments and the dialogue that we have come to know as part of working in Tacoma Park, and want to share with you tonight some of those ideas and how we've taken that insight and that commentary and worked it into the plans that we have before you tonight. And the first thing to really talk about is how our desire to create something that contributes to Tacoma Junction is really the most important piece of this project, that this be something that will, over time, be memorable, become a place of neighborhood gathering, be a place of commerce, as well as an important and enriching component of Tacoma Junction. So it's important to remember what the neighborhood is and what the area of most influence and impact is, both outwardly and inwardly. This is a circle of about a five-minute walk or a quarter-mile in radius. Our site is the one in the yellow dashed line, and if you walk in kind of any direction in about five minutes, you realize how this is really the center of an important neighborhood, primarily residential at the edges, but varied and diverse. And it's important to understand how this project can be a catalyst for some of the activity that we've all heard that is desired in this area. Our site boundary is outlined in white here. We are in between the food co-op to our east and to Healy Surgeon's Building to our west. The front of our site is Carroll Avenue, and the back of the site goes all the way down to Columbia Avenue. It's important to understand the context of the site as we have from the beginning and understand what this opportunity to redevelop actually represents for the community. And as a place of vibrancy, as a place that actually extends the offering of Tacoma Junction, this diagram has been important to us in terms of what the building can actually offer, and it's an opportunity to extend the retail frontage, capture views, and really make a moment of impact in an area that is kind of disconnected, doesn't have that continuance up and down streets, it's not as walkable as some- up and down streets, it's not as walkable as some of the other parts of Tacoma Park are. And we think very much that this project could actually start to knit that back together again, that fabric that is a part of a vibrant ground floor. We have about 240 feet of frontage all along the front property and can use a good portion of that to really reflect a vibrancy and activity. We also heard very loud and clear that it's important to understand all of the different components of access and mobility around the site, not just how things like deliveries are made and how service is handled, but how people can walk along the street and still feel comfortable, how we can walk across the street and shop in other places, how we can get to the site and how we can leave the site comfortably, safely, and even if we don't have business there, even if it's really just a place where we want to meet with other folks. It's important to talk about how we really see this opportunity of dynamism and this opportunity of life on the street, and so, we want to share with you some of the character images that we've put together to really start to explain what it is that we are promoting on this site. And we will get to the more specifically technical aspects, but we really wanted to share some of the imagery that we're thinking about in a place that needs to be contextually appropriate, in a place that needs to understand the scale of the existing buildings, in a place that understands the disposition of a building toward the street, toward the public, toward people walking, and toward people circulating around it. This is a view of the site if you were standing in front of the Spring Mill Bakery to your right and looking across at what is now the parking lot. In the distance on the right, you can see the form of the fire station tower, and to the left would be the co-op. A building that its ground floor really is the most celebratory portion, something that feels familiar, something that feels like a part of Tacoma Park. We'll talk in more detail about each of the components, but we wanted to share these views because we feel like this is a part of how we would experience the building, how we would experience this project, and how we would experience the public space that it offers. This is a view a little bit above ground level, coming from the fire station direction toward the east, looking at the intersection where if you continued through, you'd be on Ethan Allen. Our project really starts in the foreground just past the red building, which is the existing Healy Surgeon's Building, with a ramp that goes down to parking, and then shows the collection of different components of building as you look down the street to break up scale, to introduce public space, and to understand how the building actually communicates with the ground plane. And then a view looking back in the opposite direction, if we were on the street with our left side up against the new project, looking back toward the west and down Carroll Avenue. Carroll Avenue is to our right, and the opportunity really exists to understand how a streetscape doesn't just have to be about the commerce that happens, it can be about linger spaces, it can be about spaces where people are invited, even if they're not participating in buying something from the local shop. Of course, we would love them to do that, but there are places that are more welcoming for people of all ages, all lifestyles, and is really sort of an activity zone in the context of a great street. What we have prepared for this evening includes a run-through of each of the different floors of the building, understanding what their uses are, their sizes, how you get in and out of them. The plan really begins underground. The base for this building is one layer of parking below grade. The white dashed line represents the front edge of the co-op extended across the site. The property line is actually quite a bit further north on this plan toward the street edge, but we are expecting to build underneath that line toward the street to save from having to dig any further back on the site. We can accommodate in this drawing about 72 parking spaces, which is what we've shown pretty consistently through our process, trying to optimize the number of spaces, the ease of use of a deck like this. It's not ramped inside, you actually enter it from the farthest west point on the drawing here, down a ramp and curving around under the building. The width of that ramp, by the way, is 24 feet, which is wider than most ramps of this type. They're usually about 20 to 22 feet. We want to make sure that it's easily navigable, that it's clear that you can see people coming in and out, and that it gives way to the pedestrians who would be crossing in front of it, and we'll talk about that in a moment. There is space in this level for some of the mechanical and other electrical rooms and things like that that can be placed underground. The back of the building, at this point, facing Columbia down the hill, is actually above grade, so there is daylight on that facade so that it doesn't feel like you're just in a dark space. The wall along the back is actually able to get natural light and air through it. On the ground floor, which is really, to us, kind of the most vibrant and important space because this is what really meets with the street, this is where the public engages with our project. We have a series of retail fronting spaces along Carroll Avenue, starting from the right-hand side of the screen and moving toward the left. The first space has been targeted toward a café space. It's about 70 feet deep from its front wall. The front wall, by the way, is in line with the front wall of the co-op and extends down Carroll Avenue. The next couple of spaces are targeted toward neighborhood goods and services. We don't have a tenant list at this point until we get closer to understanding what the spaces will permit, but those spaces are shown on this plan, about 25 feet wide and 70 feet deep, somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,800 square feet per space. Those walls that are shown, kind of drawn up and down on the plan, are somewhat movable. They're just called demising walls. We can divide the space up depending on tenants, which is a common practice for a building like this. When you get to the spot in the plan past the fourth space, moving from the right, we pull back from the curb edge. We pulled back about 10 feet and made a couple of larger spaces. The one all the way to the left-hand side is keyed toward the design for a restaurant space. It has a kitchen at the back and could extend all the way from the front to the back, getting light through the front, through the back, and even along the side where we're next to the ramp coming down. That space is a little over 4,000 square feet, and then its kitchen is another about 1,000 square feet in order to accommodate a restaurant of that size. Again, not specific to a tenant at this point, but this is the design phase where we understand how many spaces we can deliver, how those spaces could remain flexible to appeal to a variety of tenants, which we hope will be local and regional, as well as a corridor along the back. Anything in gray is really shown as either horizontal access to get deliveries or remove waste, and then vertical circulation. I apologize, I failed to mention that in the ground level, there are two sets of vertical circulation components. Toward the right, a staircase that can take you from the parking area up to street level, and at the left, a combination elevator and staircase that also takes you up to the street level and beyond, to the upper floor. So, you see those coming through, again, at the corners of the building. The one on the left also acts as a bit of a beacon. We've shown in past sort of quick sketches the idea that we could be able to signal the beginning of the district, you know, the sort of marker of the neighborhood, and we're continuing to use that as an element that helps to break up the scale and helps signal the beginning of Tacoma Junction. So, that's where the vertical circulation is happening. The space at the back of the site is a space that doesn't enjoy the same kind of visibility on the street, and right now, we're thinking of that as studio or office or even other space. It's a little bit flexible in terms of its uses. We don't see it as being what we would normally call traditional retail because it doesn't really have a front door right on the sidewalk, but it is a good space that gets a lot of light at the back, and we'd be looking for something to fill that space that aligns with the district, that aligns with other users in the neighborhood, and that enjoys a pretty good amount of light coming into the building. This level of the building is about 20 feet tall, so it has about 16 feet or so of clear height space, which is what retailers, large or small, really demand in terms of being flexible space and being able to operate the business in the way they need to. Farthest to the right is a corridor that serves as the position where we can get deliveries from a truck lay-by lane along Carroll Avenue and then distribute things along that corridor into our corridor or into the co-op. One floor above is leasable space of about 25,000 square feet. We're showing it as the entire area on the upper floor. It could have a corridor through the middle of it to make it a front and back hallway space. The lease depths are about what they would be in a very normal and therefore flexible office building. We have one layer of this space. The images on the right show that we want to create something that has a nice high ceiling, could be available to people, whether it be in a sort of a shared work kind of environment or specific lease spaces to things like nonprofits or other groups that we could find in the neighborhood. It would be great to have folks that are part of this community occupying that second floor and even being customers for the ground floor. The staircases both continue up to this level, so one can park and come all the way up to this level as well. Finally, when we get to the roof level, you'll see on the left-hand corner, there is a small blue area which we are designing as a small 750-square-foot amenity space for the tenants in the building. It's accessed by the staircase and elevator in that corner, but only to people who have access to that upper floor space. It's not a public space. It would be used for small breakout sessions, an opportunity to get to the roof, get some fresh air, and be a little bit of an outdoor space at the top level. We are also exploring in detail the opportunities to create a very sustainable rooftop with a vegetative roof. We are also in the middle of determining how much of the space, this dashed line that is in the middle, is about the amount of space that we think we need in order to accommodate equipment and mechanical elements that get us toward a LEED Gold certification, which is our target for this building. We're showing images on the right of what that vegetative roof could do. It serves a purpose of stormwater management, it helps to cool the building, which basically reverses the effects that an empty parking lot has today of the heat island effect. It could even be used in some small way for growing herbs and other crops that may even be used in the building. We would love to have that story, that the building is performing a function that's used on-site and is kind of a recycling attitude. For the building design, as we said, you know, we spent a lot of time with the community and with you, really exploring what it was about this site that would be an acceptable design element for a project of this size, of this type, et cetera. And there's no shortage of existing examples of buildings in Tacoma Park that serve these kinds of purposes, retail space, office space, neighborhood design. And when we got together, we also understood that there is an importance to understanding the size of this site and how the scale of the building needs to address its neighbors, needs to address the requirements of the height limitations on the site, as well as be something that is strong, permanent, reflects an attitude of simplicity, that then gets turned into the most important element on this, is how people really use the building and that activity level at the ground plane. If you look at this diagram, it really just shows between the red lines is our property of about 240 or so feet. It curves a little bit, that's why I'm saying that the number is a little bit hard to express, but we are bounded by two tall but single-story buildings. And so, we have looked for ways to break down the scale by thinking of the building in a series of components. It is one building, and we didn't want to make it simply look like we were choosing elements and kind of scabbing them together, but we rather like the way that this is turning out. We can describe how we arrived at this. We felt like the first piece of architecture, moving from the left to the right, is really all about that ground plane. It was important for us to express a level of approachability, to understand that people are welcome inside this, whether walls are movable, whether they are traditional retail fronts, or whether they are articulated in some way that can both express the user inside the building, which is vital to a tenant, express some of that individuality, but also maintain a consistency in terms of height, proportion, et cetera. The images along the bottom help to express that idea of operable windows, getting daylight and fresh air in, as well as an approachability that people are welcome to come in off the street, but the tenant can also secure their space when the business isn't open. On the upper level, again, from a sustainability standpoint, we're looking to maximize and optimize daylighting, fresh air, opportunities to get to a window and actually be able to open it. And so, we're using these images along the bottom as some of the precedents that we hope to use in the building of operable and functional windows that actually are regular, sober, and meet well with the ground plane. On the upper level of the building, there's a long history in Tacoma Park and its architecture to use simple detailing, whether that's tile work or simple coping, but the building wall is usually in line with the ground plane. And so, we've expressed this as a slight curve that's actually on axis with Carroll Avenue, and some opportunity to introduce artistic ideas to venting or artistic ideas to a panel set that moves along the top of the building to give it a little bit of rhythm. We're also, sorry, one other element. We're also using the idea and expression of a canopy at the top of the first floor. It's actually about in line with the height of the building of the co-op and starts to express a nice datum across the site, and also provides shade, also provides some cover in the walking areas on the sidewalk. So, it's not just for show, it actually functions as an element that can help ensure that it's a comfortable walk along the base of the building. As we move to the east, this is the spot in the building where we've stepped back from the traditional frontage line about 10 feet, and some of the images along the bottom are some of the things that we talked with residents and citizens about, that there is a desire to have a streetscape that actually delivers on that promise of public space, and that it needs to be functional, but you also don't have to just simply co-opt that space for the use of people who have bought something inside. It's not all dining, it's not all bistro tables and chairs, that there are opportunities like these spaces in the bottom that are for people who are just passing through or places for people who want to linger. The other opportunity on this part of the facade is to get storefronts that actually open up and appreciate the space outdoors from inside. The picture on the bottom right is of a restaurant that we see as a great opportunity to use as a precedent so that people inside can use that space, feel like they're outside, but not necessarily take away from the public space on the outside of the building. And that band across the midsection of that building is a great opportunity to not only provide a balcony for the outdoor space up above, but also for art. We know that there is a long and great history and tradition in Tacoma Park to celebrate art, and while there is no specific requirement on this project to supply public art, we think this is a great opportunity to do something other than just signage and other than on the back or the side of a building, that this could actually participate in that streetscape and in that vibrant environment. That's not the art that we've selected or anything, it's a placeholder, I hope that comes through. And there is a tradition of not just painting on walls, but also of three-dimensionality. Some of these images along the bottom were just things that our team tried to pick to say that there's a lot of variety and opportunity here, whether it's something that's more three-dimensional or something that actually is dynamic and moves when the wind blows or is done out of materials that are part of the history and culture of Tacoma Park. or is done out of materials that are part of the history and culture of Tacoma Park. And then finally, as we move to the western side, which is to the far right, this opportunity to celebrate the vertical movement inside the building with a stair tower, something that actually marks the edge of the building as you come around from the fire station side, something that could be somewhat transparent or translucent, so that you see the movement and read that there's activity on the street. That notion of eyes on the street could really happen both inside and outside in this side of the building. And just some precedents that go everything from very high-tech kind of glass edges to things that are a little bit more sort of translucent and not necessarily glass, but fit well with the modernism of a piece like that. We also heard very clearly and have been working hard on understanding how we can actually deliver a great public realm in the context of all of the things that are happening and about to happen on this site. The first image came about because we understood the desire to not only have these spaces where people could pass through easily and get to where they're going, but also stop and linger and not be fearful of the activity that may be happening for services that we're intending to use the lay-by for. This diagram just simply puts out the sort of four zones that we knew we needed to accomplish in terms of a holistic design. A pedestrian clear zone, where people feel comfortable walking next to the building, most of it under canopy, being able to look into the tenant shops and see what they have. The second space is a public space zone, not necessarily in the shape that's shown on this image, and we'll talk more about that, but how that could actually be something that you don't have to feel like you're only a customer using a space that happens to be wider than others in the neighborhood. A loading zone that ensures that people don't mistakenly sort of wander into a place where people are doing other heavy lifting. We heard that and took to heart the idea that people didn't want to feel unsafe in this space. And how can we separate that comfortably, but also make sure that it's easy to use and easily signals whether you should be there or not? And then finally, the lay-by lane, which currently is shown at about 135 feet long total and accommodates all of the deliveries that we've talked about over the past few months. And some of the images on the right are of places that people really love, whether they are focused on retail environments or places to stop and linger outside a Montessori school. These are the kinds of streets that whether they pass a commercial space or other uses, people feel like that's their street. So we really wanted to make sure that the public was welcome in the right places. This is a, we have two kind of street sections. Again, they're meant to be very diagrammatic to show the separation and coming together of some of these spaces. Over on the right-hand side, we're showing Carroll Avenue. Curb-to-curb is 44 feet. It's four 11-foot lanes. That won't change through the project. In this particular case, if you look in the upper right, this is a section through the spot where the building is pulled back, where that art was above the street level. And from the face of the curb all the way back to the building is about 45 feet, which is really wider than any other sidewalks that we've got currently in Tacoma Park, because it's not just a sidewalk. It's actually performing the function of public space and sidewalk and an opportunity to share some landscaping features like properly-sized trees, lighting, et cetera. The importance of this image was that we wanted to make sure that we could accommodate through our design, and we'll continue to explore these ideas, how we ensure that people feel welcome, no matter what their age is, what they're doing here, whether they've arrived by bicycle, whether they're just passing through. So we're really keen on making sure that the elements that are here are not specific to any of those particular groups. As a designer, we often get asked to design for one specific group, and the moment we do that, other people kind of feel unwelcome. It's an unintended consequence, but we wanted to make sure that benches here are as much a place to rest as they are something maybe somebody can climb on, so that kids and older folks are both welcome. So you'll see that attitude expressed in some of the images that we're sharing. As I mentioned, the garage level is still all entirely within the property line. It just happens to extend beyond the wall of the building, so that we can use the front space more efficiently rather than having to extend out the backside. Again, a two-level building. At this point, you can see where the bit of a balcony is on the upper level, and that vertical piece would be the size of the art opportunity. That rectangle in the back is basically the outline of the stair tower. So you're seeing that in the distance. And then one of the sort of more normal street sections, if you will, through a section where the lay-by is located, this is through one of the more traditional retail spaces. The building is at the same distance from the curb as the co-op building to get an alignment and a continuance of that street space. Here, we're zoned, moving from the building outward, our pedestrian-through zone of eight feet, something that we have learned through experience is the right scale to have for ease of passage, whether you're pushing a stroller, walking your bicycle, or walking two-by-two. It's also the area where we'd expect to find signage and other elements for the store and shop owners. It has the opportunity for a seating zone that varies between two and eight feet. Sometimes that's a bench. Sometimes that's a two or a four-top, if it's like the café, a space that could benefit from having outdoor seating. There is a specific loading zone of seven feet, which has a barrier between it and the seating zone. That barrier in the renderings you'll see is basically made up of bollards closely spaced. They can have chains or fences in between them. Every once in a while, an opportunity to get through the space in case a small delivery just needs to get to the sidewalk. But it will be very, very clear which pieces of the sidewalk are really meant for all of us to walk back and forth and freely and where there's a bit of a guardrail between us and delivery activity. The lay-by lane itself is shown as an overall width of 12 feet, which is actually wider than the street, than the lane dimensions in Carroll Avenue. So plenty of room to navigate. Getting into a little bit more of the design elements, this is an early rendering by our landscape architect to take those zones and start to make sense of them and combine them and understand how a place can be both intuitive and very secure in terms of what space is used for what kind of activity. Moving from left to right, the opportunity of the sidewalk against the building and then opening up into a larger public space, that space is 45 feet deep from curb face to building face and about 60 feet wide. So it's a healthy, good-sized space to accommodate not just sort of sitting and lounging, but other activities that are somewhat more informal. We intend it to be flat, so that it's more useful. But we also, as the picture in the top right shows, think about how we can outfit that space with things that may not be traditional furniture, so that it looks like you can only do one thing there, but it may attract other user groups, or as we call them, people. The landscape architect has turned us really toward understanding how the plant material can be the most sort of thriving and healthy. He's been talking to us about the plant types, and they're really more like the ones that you're seeing in the upper picture. They're the types of plants that are hardy. They can withstand things like salt being thrown on them in the wintertime. They're healthy. They can clean the water that lands on them, but they are a little bit more scrappy. And so those edges can really help to form a character that we see like in the picture in the top right. We also like things to provide, as I said, more than one function. So the image at the bottom, the ideas of paving and how planter boxes can be converted to benches because their seating height are all things that we expect to be able to use while still maintaining an understanding that you're in Tacoma Park. We don't want this to feel like you're arriving from somewhere else or landing in somewhere else. So we still have work to do to make sure that this fits with the context of the neighborhood. We had talked about the other spaces of our site. The building doesn't take up the whole property, and so what will become of those spaces? And we have two slides to share about that. We are still, as the mayor mentioned, you know, going through this process, and then we'll be involved in meeting with other agencies at the county level, at the city level, other organizations, et cetera. And so we're really at the beginning of understanding the sizes and types of these spaces as we go through the process. The public realm is really our most important and key aspect, because we feel like that's the space that really speaks to all of us. The vegetative roof, which, as I mentioned, is an opportunity to accommodate some of our stormwater concerns, as well as meet sustainability goals, and is a responsible way to develop a flat roof, would take up as much as possible of that roof scape. We're still working with how much space we really need to devote to the operations of the building, as well as how much we can accommodate and maximize our return in terms of that stormwater message. Also, the treeed area at the back, we have, as a team, been talking about the accommodations that need to be provided there. We're expecting construction staging to happen through the front. We're trying to be minimal in terms of how much we have to disturb in the treeed area at all. However, there is the opportunity, and people know historically this site hasn't actually been that well-cared-for over the years, bit of a dumping ground over time. The opportunity exists as we clean that space up to understand how we can kind of provide a restorative element to that treeed area, not developing on it, but looking at it as a way to teach, as a way to express the greenness of Tacoma Park. When we look at the sustainability features on the site, there are more than this, but these are some of the key elements that we heard from people, that, you know, Tacoma Park is really all about sustainability. And how is this building, as a new element in the built environment, going to approach some of those ideas? And kind of moving around the site, the roof and the streetscape, we're looking to increase shade and green areas. Right now, that site as an asphalt-topped parking level could be repaired by actually building a building on it with a green roof and providing shade and reducing the heat island effect. That the front of the building is pedestrian-focused, that we don't have to rely on cars, personal vehicles, to bring us to the site. Tacoma Park is a very walkable community, and this extension of the street frontage and a comfortable streetscape can only add to that. The site enjoys multimodal access today and will so in the future with the D.C. City Bike Share, as well as the bus stop. We have to work through some of the issues with our transportation component and with the city in terms of where those things are located, both for their continued operation and for the safest place we can locate them. The little circle on the right, the bicycle parking, we understand that people may arrive here on their own bicycles. And so providing simple things like places to lock up your bike or a place to drop some of the non- or dockless bikes may be an opportunity for us as well. We want to optimize the daylighting and natural ventilation of the building all the way from the garage level up through. So we're expecting to light the building naturally all the way around. We have offsets on all four sides of the building and want to take advantage of that to provide both views out as well as operable windows within. Our bio-retention opportunity for stormwater management and conservation of the wooded area and environmental mitigation. As I said, it's an important component to us to respect what is there, but also to clean it up and make sure that it's operating in its most natural state. So we wanted to offer the opportunity to engage in more discussion on this with you. We want to leave you with a couple of those images that are really about the activity and the opportunity that exists on this site to really knit together a neighborhood place. Thanks.
Great. Thank you very much. I know this is the first of many discussions. I don't know if anyone had any opening remarks or questions to ask regarding this. Councilwoman Dabala, do you want to start?
Yeah, thank you. That was quite interesting. A couple of questions. One is, can you just say in summary, just briefly, how you feel this has responded to what the previous council laid out last October? And then the second question is just, can you go again a little bit slower over some of the sidewalk and lay-by dimensions and some of the mechanical, like the trash plan, if any? Maybe you're not up to that yet. So one sort of big scope, any of those much more granular, if you can do that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I think in terms of the responses to the questions, you know, some of the sort of more major, if you will, elements that came out of October's sessions included whether or not to have a third floor. We have decided that we have a two-story building. The third floor, we can use in another way that actually reflects sustainability. We do have a small spot up there that we think is an amenity for a tenant in the upper floor to get up onto a smallish 25 by 30 or so space to enjoy the outdoors. But that's one of those elements. I would say a second was to really understand and take to heart how to talk about and engage in a discussion about public space. And so rather than just sort of saying it will be in the streetscape or not having fully fleshed ideas about that, we've really started to understand the concepts of size and space and what can be accommodated and what can't be, and how that space actually works together in the context of the park across the street, the rest of the streetscape, access, mobility. And we understood that and think we've started to address that issue as well. I think some of the other things that came up during the discussions, and feel free to ask me about specific ones that I might be forgetting, but had to do with what our tenancy plans are going to be, how we can make sure that this is vibrant and acceptable and understanding, and we're still at the beginning of that. It's early in terms of understanding how we can reach out to that tenant pool. The first step for us is really to understand what kind of space we have and really how marketable those kinds of things are. So the ideas about how this building meets the street, what its shape is, what its size is, what its flexibility could be, are all important and a part of that conversation. I think that we also had a lot of questions about how this second-floor space would operate, who tenants would be. I think we're still, again, looking to seek that through the design and understand how that space could be divided up. We think it's a very flexible space, so it could accommodate some small users as well as some larger users. And we also understood that there was a need to make sure that we get cleanly from sort of the ground floor out to the building. We heard that if it was underground parking, people didn't want it to be dark. They didn't want it to feel like you were kind of enclosed. And so understanding how that meets with the outdoor space, and there could be lighting even larger than we're thinking of today to allow daylight into the building was another. I think those were sort of some of the bigger, and again, from my purview of design, were some of the big design elements that we could move around the space. We also, I think in early phases, we heard that there was a concern that this was kind of simply an extrusion of the maximum size of the building and just kind of pulled up, and there wasn't much character to it. And we're really starting to think about how this acts like a series of spaces. It's still one building and how it needs to be holistic, but how those spaces look like separate and easily kind of digestible components to a building like this. So I think we're moving toward that target. And your second question about the specific dimensions, I'll go back to the street sections just to talk about those a little bit. The sidewalk dimension really changes anywhere from 45 feet from building face to curb edge. And then in some of the other places is more of the normal Tacoma Park dimension of about 20 feet from building face to curb face, like you're seeing here. And then from a plan perspective, we'll talk about how those spaces are zoned, but actually, I'd rather talk about it from the more designed element, because I think it's a little clearer how people would use the spaces. The space that is up against the building, we've found in our retail environment design experience, that it really works very well for the tenants in the building, who are really our end users, that to have people closer to the buildings as they walk along their clear path helps out those tenants, because they don't have to navigate. their clear path helps out those tenants because they don't have to navigate around tables and chairs and things that are spilling out onto the sidewalk. So we have an eight-foot clear passage all the way across the front face of the building. The exception to that is where the building steps back, so we've followed the edge of the building so that we can maximize the dimension of that public space. Then along, from that eight feet out, is a space of about three or four feet up to about eight feet because the face of the building actually isn't parallel to Carroll Avenue as it comes down. So it gets a little wider toward the co-op side. And then at that point would be a series of bollards or vertical protection from that point going toward Carroll Avenue. And from that point toward Carroll Avenue is seven feet of passageway for truck carts, hand carts, things like that for deliveries, and a 12-foot lay-by, so another 19 feet. So we're kind of giving up some of that space that we can use for our tenants to make sure that it's a very clear distinction between the public way and what's used for service and delivery.
So 12 feet.
The gray area on this diagram is 12 feet.
12 feet and seven feet, not 12 feet or seven feet.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. And by the way, the edge of this drawing is the existing curb line. So the lay-by actually happens entirely within the existing curb line. So there's no change to the through movement traffic. There's just an additional 12 feet inside that. And then you asked about the deliveries. I'll go back to, there's a diagram here, sorry, to flip through.
I stepped down, I must have missed all those.
The loading zone in the lay-by at the top of the image, the dotted line is the line of travel from someone from the very back of that site, the furthest place away, along the sidewalk, along that seven-foot loading area, and then crosses the sidewalk only once, which is at the point of that gray area, which is the service entrance to either deliver to the Tacoma Junction project or to the co-op. For our building, as much as for deliveries, we're also looking at trash pickup and recycling to happen also from that loading zone area. So there are a series of trash rooms and storage spaces within our building that would then use that sort of corridor out to the street on pickup day. So they wouldn't be stored out on the sidewalk. They would be stored within the context of the Tacoma Park, Tacoma Junction building, and then rolled out for the times of delivery, or times of pickup that are established by a centralized service. We'd have one removal service working for the building.
Colin, since you are on this one, and I know you all are still looking through the traffic studies, but that is one of the things that when we're talking about safety issues and other things with the lay-by that people have raised concerns about. Is there anything you could talk to us tonight about as we wait for a fuller discussion of that?
So, do you want to say anything while I'm going to go? All right. So one of the great things I get to do is act like I know all of the components of my teammates, but I have asked them to provide me with sort of more of the language that I need. But we are, our traffic consultant is the traffic group, Paul Dor, who's been working closely with us in terms of the design of that space as well as working with State Highway in both formal and informal conversations about what are the opportunities for that space. As I mentioned, there is about 135 feet at its widest point for this loading zone. That is to accommodate the largest of the vehicles that are expected to deliver to this site, which is technically called a WB67. It's a large tractor-trailer. It's 72 feet long from front to back, and 72 feet can navigate into the space and park conveniently within that 135 feet. The place where it is located was a matter of discussion and is located where it is because of the current location of the signal arm, which is not expected to move, as well as being able to visibly sort of see their way out of this space conveniently as the traffic light cycles. So there is some math to that function, how many times an hour that traffic signal cycles and how long you have to wait to get out into that, into the path of travel. We've had a lot of questions about multitudes of vehicles arriving at the same times. We are working through and sifting through all of the data to understand exactly when and how people are currently using this area of Tacoma Park. We also fully expect that the solution to that is part management, part signage, a clearer understanding of who can use that space. The question came up about whether or not that space would interrupt any kind of bus service or any kind of emergency vehicle service. The answer is no. We would have to move the bus stop from its current location, but we're currently looking at where it actually might be better served on the site, either ahead of where it's currently located or back. I don't have an answer for which one is better. We're looking through to see which ones work better for safety, for areas where you can congregate, and areas where buses can safely kind of pull to the curb. Emergency vehicles would probably use that loading zone when there's no, during the times that it's not available for loading, but they can reach and fight fires, respond to emergency situations in the path of travel, as well as from the back of the site at Columbia Avenue, like they currently are expected to do. I think that there have been questions about timing, questions about cycling, what happens if there is already a tractor-trailer there? There is a path for tractor-trailers to circulate and come back if the space is occupied. All of those kinds of things are things that we're thinking about as we design holistically. We want to make sure that it's safe for pedestrians. You can see where the location of the most currently, or most recently installed crosswalk is as it travels across the street to Spring Mill. And we want to make sure that all of those movements are sort of clarified and thought through. We have worked for a long time in terms of coming up with this solution and explored a lot of other opportunities that were negated, whether they were because we needed to cross a double-yellow line, which the state highway wouldn't accept, or we're using multitudes of vehicles that need to make bigger turns, et cetera. So this really is the best solution in order to meet the demands of the junction. We also expect, by the way, that some of our tenants that are the smaller users actually get their deliveries through their front doors. And so that's why I was mentioning that there may be breaks in some of those barriers so that someone in a smaller truck, whether it's a UPS delivery or some smaller panel truck, could actually just stop there, bring something in through the front and back out. So there is a lot going on in that site. We are, as you said, working through our data, and you as well, we're sharing that information among each other, and expect to continue to make sure that that is handled in the most optimized way possible.
And since we're on this one, what's the distance of the fuchsia dotted line? Do you know of hand?
Well, it's 135 feet across that, so I would put it at about 170 feet or so if you had to go all the way from that end and follow the dashed line. We can measure that and give you a more accurate reading.
Great. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that it seems like you've really taken a look at the feedback that you received and tried to make some adjustments based on that. I see some things in it that I really like. I like the efforts at incorporating the co-op building and the Healy Building and kind of pulling those in so that hopefully there's a sense of continuity there and a sense of people who are shopping at multiple are probably not going to the Healy Building, but maybe going to the co-op and the other businesses here. One of the things I didn't see in your presentation, and I believe that when I spoke with you earlier, you did have an image of this, is what it looks like from the back. And I know a lot of the residents on Columbia Avenue in that area are very interested in what that side will look like. So if we could get some details on that and some imagery, that would be really helpful.
Absolutely. We're still, we're exploring how that building actually shapes. Right now, as you look from the back, it's a thicket essentially, and you can't see anything. So we're working through opportunities to understand how that building meets the ground, where the opportunities are for the facade to actually read like a proper building. We fully expect that there will be windows and glass as well as openings from the garage. And we want to take care to make sure that that's something that people who are on Columbia Avenue aren't just met with this blank wall. We're still exploring that, and we're happy to continue to produce that so that people understand the full range of how the building responds to all of its different sides.
Great. Yeah, I think that would be really helpful. In terms of the garage and the openings of the garage, just something to think about. I think it would be really important to make sure that the height prior to those windows is high enough so that you don't have headlights shining out of there. So I think it's great to have the openings there, but make sure those aren't shining into people's houses from behind. And then can you talk a little bit about what those sort of lobby spaces on the two sides of the building look like, if those are real lobbies or if it's just sort of you walk in and you're walking up a staircase? What are those spaces like?
So as a small building, they're not terribly generous lobbies. We don't expect to have things like check-in desks, et cetera. But the one on the left, shown here as the stair tower, has plenty of room to sort of move inside, has a bit of a vestibule so that you're not just sort of pushed right into the stair or into the waiting area for the elevator. It's about 10 by 20 feet, so it's 200 square feet before there is a stair or before there is an opening for the elevator. And it really is only to go either down or up to the office space upstairs on that end of the building. On the right-hand side, there's a bit of a combination of spaces here. We have essentially an opportunity to come in and go all the way down that corridor to the space at the back of the building. So it will be designed in a way that welcomes people. It's not a back entrance because in some cases it's the front for people who are using that space. The staircase is a little bit smaller on this side just because it's simply a stair that goes down and comes back up and brings you to street level. But it is a welcoming stair, not intended to simply sort of be a door. And make sure that people feel comfortable coming into that space, well-lighted, and that you could go upstairs or downstairs to get your car out of the garage as well. But neither is really sort of intended to be a lobby like you would see in a residential complex or something.
Okay. And then I'm looking forward to exploring some of these things more in depth in the future work sessions, but I just wanted to ask regarding the material of the lay-by. I think it'll be really important to make sure that this doesn't sort of look like an expanse of, you know, widening of the road, so it looks like there's a huge uninviting road, and to make it sort of more pedestrian-friendly there. So in the ways that you can, is there a way for you to sort of look at a different colored material or something that kind of signifies that as not being imposing and overwhelming?
That'll be a really good topic. It already has been internally because we don't want to send the wrong message and decorate it so that people feel like they should be standing in it. At the same time, we don't want to just create a big ugly expanse of the extension of the roadway. So we're fighting both the wrong signalization on the one hand and also making a space that doesn't just feel like we've kind of forgotten about it. Where we have sort of landed as of today is that we definitely want it to feel a little bit more like a car place so that trucks know that that's where they're supposed to pull in. We know we can do that with signage, but the material that it's made of is also important. And we've talked about separating a little bit from the rest of the street in that instead of being asphalt, it could be another material so that it doesn't send the wrong message to a driver thinking that it might be a turn lane. So we definitely have to explore those things. But we really felt strongly as a team that we didn't want to make it too pedestrian-friendly. We want to send people to the right places where we want them to cross the street or where we want them to be protected behind those barriers. So we definitely want to try to balance that the right way and send a very clear message to anybody using it.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for being with us here late tonight.
This is early for me.
For the presentation, still so far.
Yeah.
I think if you could maybe, well, let me first ask you about the parking. Is that parking available for co-op workers and also for their customers?
It is, yes.
Okay. Has there been any discussion about how many spaces here?
We haven't yet settled on a number of spaces or...
See, I knew I could get him out of the chair.
Oh, wow. He did that on purpose.
Sorry, Colin's doing so well, I hate to come on. So in terms of the co-op, we are hoping to have discussion with them. We've had a little back and forth recently, and we've invited them to come in to discuss a lot of these elements. So I guess my answer is, sort of, Colin's right that it would be available to the co-op of whether they would want dedicated spaces or they'd want some type of parking plan or something like that. We don't know at this point, but we would like to have part of that at discussions and find out very soon.
I remember back some time ago when this started, you know, they were thinking about expanding their facility. And I see you have a real nice back room in there. Is that still a possibility that, or is it too late to start agreeing to?
No, it is a possibility, and it's not too late.
Okay, well, good. I leave that to the people who need to talk about it then. Okay. Other, oh, the last question on the parking is about, is that pay-to-park or how do you...
Yes.
Okay. All right. If you could go back to like about your third slide, one was Carroll Avenue in the foreground. Keep going. There you go. I know some of the concern that has been expressed by community members is the crosswalk you have pictured here and that they fought so hard to get and just been installed, and now people want to make sure that it stays there. I see you have it in your picture, but does that mean it's going to stay there?
The intent is to have it still stay there to provide a safe crossing across.
And so the position of the lay-by isn't going to hinder keeping that crosswalk?
We're still figuring out exactly where all of those things need to land. The, right now, in this image, the far end of this handicap ramp has been moved a little bit to accommodate the current position of where the lay-by is. If that needs to move back to keep the handicap ramp where it is, that may be a way to accommodate exactly where the crosswalk is. We actually think it would be a little bit better aligned if it was in the location shown here.
But that's something you make happen. It's going to stay, the crosswalk's going to be there.
It's part of, yeah, absolutely. And it's part of the whole continued discussion about where all of these things land in the context of some of the fixed objects, the easement for the signal, the signal arm itself, the equipment needed to run it. So it's a complex moving thing, but we absolutely want to make sure that people can get across to our site as well as back across and want to use that crosswalk that's been put in to serve its purpose, absolutely.
And then I know there was some concern about the utility pole that is currently located on that side of the street, and I don't see that in your picture.
Right. So the team is currently exploring how we can move, there's a pole that would be actually located right where the word "cafe" has its "e" in this image, and we are proposing that we move it to the opposite side, the north side of Carroll Avenue. Most of the utility poles coming up from Ethan Allen and then continuing down Carroll are on actually the north side and cross over at this point and at one other point to service some of the users on the south side. We would want to rectify that and keep the wires, for the most part, on the north side and cross over without the use of a pole, if we can do that. We would love to accommodate that. It would clean up a little bit of the clutter of the crossing lines, and that's something that we're definitely exploring.
So for me, the answer is that, yes, you kept that in mind and you're still working on that.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. Thank you. That'll leave you all, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, appreciate the presentation. There were a few issues that I had been most concerned about with the previous iteration of this in October, so I want to touch briefly on those and then ask a couple of other questions. So one of the things that I didn't like about the earlier one was the third story, so we don't have that, so that's good. I thought that the earlier version lacked sufficient... I thought that the earlier version lacked sufficient public open space that wasn't connected to a particular restaurant or retail outlet at the street level. You've obviously put more here. I wonder if you can say a little bit about what it would take to have that inset potentially be deeper? And remind us again what the, what the width of that currently is now, too. So...
There.
Right. So the bluish or grayish area, whatever color that is, right?
So the, the part that's colored in the grayish tone is about 40 feet, 35 to 40 feet, from Carroll Avenue toward the building, to make way for the sidewalk elements. We really want, want that to read as a complete space across, so we're not really seeing the division so much in that space. But those are the dimensions. It's 45 feet from building face to curb edge, and about 60 feet from the stair tower to the next portion of the building that pushes back to that street line.
So what would, what would be the effect, in your view, if that were to go in deeper?
So the reason that we stopped at 10 feet is, we want to make sure that any tenancy issues that we have are still engaged with Carroll Avenue. Once we're getting back that far, we start to get a little nervous about pulling it any further back. The reason for that is, we're already starting to get to a point where we're a little bit hidden by the stair tower for people passing by. The visibility starts to go down. We have the art element above, so not the typical signage. So we want to give as much advantage to the user inside the building as we can, and felt like the healthy attitude of that space was to not only pull that building back, but actually make any outdoor activity happening within that space happen inside. So we're actually extending the use into the building, but we're not particularly comfortable with pulling that wall any further back than we have, because we start to lose some of the benefits of being on a street and having passersby come, come closer to it. So that's where we've landed with it for now, and feel like through the continued exploration of what some of those furnishings and elements that fill that space could be, make sure that it still feels open and welcoming and not cluttered.
Right. Well, I know we'll have the opportunity with the pop-up to sort of get the feel of that. My initial sense is that could be bigger. And just to go to the elevator, so one of the other questions I had was, and maybe you can talk about the decision-making for this, obviously the elevator's a good distance from, say, where Co-op shoppers would come in, and so what are the possibilities, for example? Instead of having, you could still have the tower there for stairs, but could you have the elevator position? I can see why you wouldn't want it right up at the front, where all the deliveries happen, because that would be inconvenient, but could it be on the right side, you know, closer to the Co-op side, but maybe more toward the back of the building?
The, for many of the reasons that you mentioned, the elevator was located in the sort of upper-left corner of this image for a couple of reasons. One, it helped us build that case for having something vertical in the building, rather than just that stair. So architecturally, it had some benefit, being in that location. Secondly, it does extend up to the rooftop level, where we have our outdoor space, and so it's closer to that edge of the building for access to that and maintenance overall. There is not a physical reason why it couldn't be located in other places around the building, but we felt like that gave a great opportunity to sort of pass by, leave a mark where you entered the garage, remember where you can come up again, and then actually walk across the frontage of the building in order to get to our shops and the Co-op. The other element I want to mention is that the Co-op still retains its 18 spaces on its surface, and so there is room to get directly in from that angle as well. But we're continuing to explore all of these options and understand where the optimum location is.
So just to be clear, the elevator goes from the parking level all the way up to the rooftop, where you have that little?
It goes to a level where we can get to the rooftop, just by people who are allowed to get to the rooftop. So we have to do it in secure...
But the staircase goes from, doesn't go all the way up to the top, or?
The staircase on the left-hand side goes all the way up.
On the right side?
The staircase on the right-hand side does not currently. It goes only to the office level and back down to the garage.
Okay. So you, you can get to both floors, just not to that rooftop.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And so one of the other concerns that I had before was about how the delivery area and the trash handling area and the outdoor café kind of table area were all jumbled together. That's less true now, and I personally like the idea of having the seating just be for the public, and then the restaurant-cafe type areas, you can open up the windows and have that access. And that's separate from the delivery to some degree. I guess where the trash area is, and Councilmember DeBol asked about this, too, that, I'm just not 100% clear on, in this, and maybe on this slide, you can just talk a little bit more about, how would the trash, not storage, but bringing it out to the front actually happen?
So the rectangle behind the staircase on the right-hand side?
Right.
Has a set of doors out to the corridor?
Yep.
So that is where trash receptacles would be taken out to the corridor, then head north through the opening to the sidewalk, and toward the front end of the lay-by for pickup.
So people who are using the staircase, though, are going to be not on that long gray corridor on the right, but on the one on the left?
Correct. That's correct. The only point of crossover happens where the horizontal corridor crosses over at one point, and that would happen at one point during the day, in the evenings as trash gets ported across.
But typically, I mean, there's going to be trash picked up every day, presumably, right? Yeah.
Right. But not all day.
Right. Okay. Just a couple of other quick points, if you don't mind. So for the egress and ingress into the underground parking, so when people came up out of there, are they coming up about where they come out of the lot now, or maybe over, a little bit more over by the Johnny's now, right? Is that where they're coming up now?
Basically, up against the edge of the Healy building.
Right. So it's slightly over from where we emerged from the library, from the parking today, right?
Johnny's is where the stair tower and gray building is located now.
And so that ingress-egress is about halfway between the two traffic lights? Is that, is that?
Yes.
Kind of where that is? And so when people came up out of that, would they have some little flashing light to warn them that, you know, they're?
Yeah. And so what we're, what we're working toward now, as you can see in this image, we want to make sure that people, the, the ramp actually flattens out before you get to the sidewalk. So we're trying to maximize the visibility, so you've actually crested before you get out into where either the public is located and certainly traffic. The little sign that's drawn on this image artistically, on the facing side of Carroll, could represent the parking sign, that there is parking located here. From the other direction could be stop sign, to make sure that you stop before you meet the pedestrians and then pull forward to navigate into the street, as well as several signs that our traffic consultant has provided us with, that say things like "watch for pedestrians", et cetera. We also like the, the opportunity that if that tower has some glass element, there's a little bit more visibility, there's a little bit more open view. The Healy building is actually a little bit further back, so we think there's plenty of time to sort of do the normative double stop. Stop at the stop sign, see if there are any pedestrians, and then move forward to the intersection. The idea also is that as these two light signals here, and then further back at Philadelphia, are timed so that there is movement out into and out of this garage at times, that traffic is stopped, not moving across. So we're working those details out as well.
Just one last question, then. If you can go back to the slide we were looking at before. That one, yeah. Oh, sorry. So those back retail areas that don't have easy access from the front, how do you envision those being used? The large one in the, is the small one just connected to the quote-unquote restaurant?
Yes. The smaller one is the kitchen space for that restaurant.
So the back one, which you talked about a little bit, and which Councilmember Siemens asked about also, how do you see that being used? Who would walk to that place if you have to kind of wander down past the trash to get there?
So in, in retail environments where we have spaces that don't have that great access, but also have the opportunity for good light out the back, studio space works very well. We know that there's a fitness and wellness population of spaces and stores and users in this space. That's a space that could broaden that kind of use, whether it's wellness, fitness. The studio space idea is one that it could even be non-traditional retail space and office use. It could be a space that has that access, you walk down a hallway to get to your space, and what you're rewarded with out the backside is a lot of view of trees.
But you'd have to know, you wouldn't just be drawn in off of it.
Correct. And the way that we've set that up from the street design is, if you look at the left image, toward the left of this image, the red portion of the building is the door that you would use to go up or down the stairs to the parking garage, or down that corridor to get to the space. So we could treat it at the street as a storefront, clear signage, you just walk down a corridor to get to the space.
There'll also be an extension to second floor.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens, you had a follow-up question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, back on the question about the parking ramp, it seems that it's within a couple car lengths of the stoplight at Philadelphia Avenue. Is that, do you envision people being allowed to turn left out of there?
Currently, we're seeing it as full movement. What we've been guided by is that we have the room and the spacing to make it right in, left out, or right in, left out, all four ways. Yes. And it doesn't require, at least at this point, it may require a stop sign for traffic coming out of the ramp, but it doesn't require any other sort of signalization to do those movements, based on what our traffic consultant is telling us about its distance, its visibility, and the number of trips that would be coming in or out.
Okay. So traffic would be the only concern there, where the traffic would allow a left turn out of there? All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Kovar's questions regarding, if you go back to the one that shows the, the trash removal. And so are we envisioning that there would be dumpsters here, or how is that working? Especially if you have a restaurant and a café?
Yeah. Anything, so we're, we're working through that. There is a trash room here that's primarily for the users that are the smaller spaces facing the street. In the spaces that we have designed currently as food and beverage, both the restaurant space with its kitchen and the café space, they could store some, there's enough room in those spaces to deal with their own trash until they have to move it out for pickup or collection. We're also working through, depending on the user types, whether there's any need for chilled trash, et cetera. And we also have the opportunity to think about some of the spaces below grade for storage. We're working through all of those things. Depending on users, we'll get a better feel for it. The, the expectation is that any trash that we have in this building can be accommodated within our walls and not stored somewhere exterior, and then brought out just for the, for the point at which it gets picked up.
Cool. I guess the other thing, just to echo what Councilmember Kovar said about the elevator, somewhat concerns about the positioning of it, so possibly over the next few weeks, maybe exploring if that could go in someplace else. I understand the Co-op parking does have it on the Sycamore side, but if people do choose to park down below, my concern would be grocery carts going across, going down there, being left in different places. And so that would just be, if we could explore, maybe talk about that when we go more in-depth on things. But I just want to say, you know, I, as, as my colleagues have said, too, I think there are a lot of things we talked about in the fall. I like the staggering, very much, of the building, back and forth. I think it gives it a lot more dimension. It doesn't look like one-massing. And the opportunities for public art and the outdoor space. I think I'm very excited to talk more about that and the potential there. So, and I think the, the pop-up at the junction is going to be a great opportunity for all of us to go out there and actually feel how big these spaces look. So, traffic gets 10:35. We're going to have a lot of opportunities to drill into all of these things. And don't forget, open house on Saturday for the budget and for Tacoma Junction, and we'll have activities for children there, and everything is up on the website. So thank you, Colin, and the whole team.
Thank you.
I knew you wanted to wrap up. I just, I wanted to ask you.
Great job.